What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Role call please Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Mr. Haraway?
Present.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Maxie?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Mr. Mohol?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here. Alright, that brings us to the public hearing on the 2019 tax levy. Would anybody like to speak to the tax levy? Alright, that brings us to the approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to make any changes to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion and second?
Make the motion and approve the agenda.
A second? A second, a motion by Maxie and a second by Mohol and Ryan, you weren't interested in changing anything about the agenda, were you?
Good to me.
Okay. Role call please Kelly.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Mohol?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to audience visitors. We have no cards tonight unless anybody would like to speak. Yeah, that brings us to the treasurer's report.
As is present.
Any questions for Melissa? Alright, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Yes, a few things here. First thing, Kelly's been working extremely hard to organize the information and evidence that we need to have uploaded and on hand for the technical assistant visits, which comes from the ROE late January, early February. So, our goal is to have most of the information to us over break and next week. I do want to thank Kelly in public here for all of her time and effort and spent a lot of stuff to organize, and also the administrators and our secretaries for their help and assistance. There's a lot of evidence that we have to pull together and I really appreciate her good time. So, second one, Kerry's gonna give us a quick summary of the school improvement process that we're cooperating with the ROE on and working with Kim Mape. I'll turn it over to Kerry.
Thanks. So, just wanted to let everyone know the work that we've done so far and then what we have coming up. We've partnered with the regional office of education for school improvement for this year. So, we've had two workdays so far. Our K-4 buildings met with their SIP teams here on November 18th, and then our U B middle school and high school met here with their SIP teams on December 2nd. So, in the first day, what we really spent time doing was the ROE gave an overview of the summative designation ratings that come from our state data, which is the same, you know, information that I presented to all of you at the last board meeting. You know, so really looking at that state data and talking about those summative designations. And then usually the schools were able to learn how their data was used to give that summative rating of either exemplary, commendable, underperforming, or lowest performing. And then the schools completed a self-assessment using the Illinois Quality Framework. And the Illinois Quality Framework has seven components or seven standards on which the schools rate themselves. And they find evidence or, you know, select evidence and list evidence of how they're meeting those standards. Those seven standards are continuous improvement, climate and culture, shared leadership, governance, management and operations, educator and employee quality, family and community engagement, and student and learning development. It's quite a lengthy self-assessment. Most of the teams, actually I don't think any of the teams finished the entire thing on that day. So, a couple of them had one or two of the standards to still do with their SIP team after we met. And so, they're all finishing those now or already have them finished in preparation for our next meeting. So, in January and February, the ROE is coming back and they're meeting with individual school teams to do a deep data analysis. And so, that data will include the state data, but also some of our local data, like our maps assessment. And then it'll also include some of our climate and culture data that comes from our five essentials survey. And then also looking at Ames Web data, which is also an elementary measure that we use. So, we'll look at some of those different data points and really dig in, not to just the big picture, but then really starting to dig into specifics for each building and looking at some item analysis and, you know, really looking at how our students are doing on specific standards. And then the whole goal is that the schools then will use all of this information to create actionable goals that will be part of their school improvement plan. What they're, what we're really doing is building all of this this year to enact the plan next year is really the whole point of it. It takes some time to really dig in. But schools are already just, you know, starting to notice some things and talk about some things they could even change for this year. But the deep data dive and then the next steps of setting goals and then creating some actionable plans will really be for, to put into place for next year.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you Kerry, thank you very much Kerry.
I got two more things, both for Capron and Nicole, chime in if you've got anything to add. A thank you to the Rosco Chapter 641 Order of the Eastern Star. I think that's the right name, am I right? They provided Capron Elementary $500 worth of books for beginning readers, which is super, super generous. Also too, thank you to the Golden Apple Foundation. They provided a grant to live safely to begin the one book, one school reading program, which Palper Lobe also runs, but Luxa Capron will be part of that now too this year, which is awesome. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Speaking of Liz, to Maranitas Capron's music program, yes?
Yes, come on.
At six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
We all got a Gmail?
Yep.
It's nice of Liz to invite us. Alright, that brings us to, unless there were any questions for Mike. That brings us to the committee reports, policy committee.
We don't have a meeting set. I think we're gonna try to shoot for February 5th. If Kelly can get everything ready in time, otherwise we'll push it back with the audit and everything she's doing. There's a lot of policies, so.
We do have policy.
Yeah, we could do it before the CIA meeting.
We'll try.
Alright, that brings us to business services.
Business services did meet on December 4th and there are several items from that meeting that are being discussed later on the agenda. Levy, the PRT, demand response energy savings, bus purchases, a lot of things coming up here.
Alright, on the agenda, facilities and long range planning.
Facilities met on the 4th as well. We began, little down to a list of priorities and work that we'll be looking to do for next summer. We, I think we probably added a little bit to my list versus necessarily taking a few things away, but I'm sure we'll have another meeting scheduled after the first year. And I guess that would encourage everyone to attend to that meeting. We'll lay out a framework for probably what we're going to get done for the summer.
One thing I wanted to add, I totally forgot to put it in my announcements, but I put it in your weekly update last week. They did come out with the state, State of Illinois payments grant, 50,000, and we've got to match 50,000, but I know we've got that amount of work that we can do. But I think my goal right now is to use a bunch of the life safety required and recommendations with storefronts and all sorts of things to get to the 100,000. And I'll kind of be working on that over break to bring that. We may have to meet in January, but I'll work with you on that.
Did that mean, I think it was a hold it, yes, in most of us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything else said?
No.
Okay.
Well, CIA.
We met, we have a few items on the agenda which will come later, and Mike, is now the time we'd like to talk about the course approval forms updates?
We've got a, we can work it right into the actual course approval process of the board. Right then, we'll kind of talk about the whole thing.
So Kerry presented about the quality framework and the work they're doing there, and that's where we ask Kerry to come and present that to the board. We also covered our course approval forms, and we have some updates for that coming, as well as our student retention and promotion, which is also on the agenda. And our next meeting is on February 5th.
Are we gonna start trying to do all the meetings in one night?
It.
Is that the intention or is that just a coincidence?
I've done it a few times because I've heard, and we can change it any way you guys like to. I know, I think Wednesday nights were hard to do. I kind of budded some of them up because we had people that were staying for both the business and facilities, but we can, we can structure it in one.
Okay. It matters not to me. Alright, that brings us to the consent agenda.
That's one though, if the board does have a strong preference on that. I try to do it in one night, or like two, four gets hard. But if we've got two, it's kind of nice to go back to back for those that want to be there for both of them. But if that's not working and you guys want to do something different, open dialogue is whatever's easiest for people.
I'd like to have it in one night, just so easier that way.
Yeah, if you have strong feelings one way or the other, please let me know.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda containing the minutes of the regular meeting of November 12th, personnel, board conference expenses, appointment to North Boone Education Foundation, and overnight field trip requests for the high school?
Some of.
Second. Motion by Maxie, a second by Mohol and a role call please Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Mr. Mohol?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business and the athletic survey and vision.
Yeah, I'll start off first here. At the September board meeting, we gave an update on our athletic department and our programs from both the middle school and the high school. The board asked, they'd love to hear back more about the, about a vision of where our programs are going. When we were asked that, we also noticed, Eric and I also noticed, we also knew that at that time we had to have our, what's it called, our equity survey, which is done every four years. It's mandatory by the State of Illinois. So, one of the things that, working with administration, I tried to do was to ask some other, which I felt were important questions in the survey. We sent that survey out to all of our students 7 through 12. We also sent it out to all of our parents 7 through 12. We sent it out multiple times, hoping that, you know, if you didn't get a chance to take it, you would take it. Really kind of pushing, we wanted a good, good response, right? So, really what, what our survey did was, we did the one that was required by our equity, looking at the number of students that participated, the sports that we offer, we off, and then also looked for if we didn't offer it, what are some sports that you would love to hear back from? We also surveyed them about what they, what they liked, what they didn't like. I'm not gonna go over all of the results of those surveys. I did put those in your online packets for you to see that entire survey with every single response that we got for your information to look through. So, a few of the things that I'll just kind of highlight. One, we asked students like what, what sports they participated in. We also asked them some other sports that they would love to see us offer. Well, hockey was one that came up. A lot of boys volleyball came up. We also asked, if you didn't participate in sports, why? A lot of the reasons, and again, I'm kind of summarizing or paraphrasing here, a lot of the ones that came back out of the sports surveys were time, interest, and busy or involved with a variety of other things. That seemed to be some common loops that we saw through there. One of the questions we asked was, do you feel our programs are well supported? 70% said yes. We said, what do you like about our programs? Well, they liked the fun, the enjoyment, hanging out with peers. That seemed to be one of the largest ones that came back over and over and over. And they also put down our coaches. One of the questions we did put in there was, what do you feel is not supported or is disliked about our programs? And, you know, as you know, we always face hurdles with what we're doing. A few of the ones that kind of jumped out, and this was kind of informational for me, was transportation. I think that we do have some kids that are affected by transportation. Obviously, work and home conflicts came up. Our facilities came up, especially regarding track. One of the loops that we saw in there was they'd love to be able to hold a home track. Coaches came up in there. The one that jumped, there was two that jumped for me a little more as we kind of did this. And I want to say that night, we talked about it here at, when we talked about the overall state of the program. Uniforms came up quite a bit, just kind of the condition of some of our uniforms. So, I think that that is something that we really need to take into consideration. And also, another one that kind of jumped for me was, is that people view that some activities are favored more or kind of hyped more than others. And I think that that is maybe something that should jump out at us to say, we should do a good job of hyping all of our activities. So, this became a piece really of kind of what, and Aaron's gonna talk a little bit more about some of the things that we kind of came back and talked with. Aaron's gonna provide a vision with you tonight. Obviously, there's a lot of things that still, like what are our next steps that we've still got to go through and complete and continue to flush out a little further. But we, rough together, what we felt really was a vision and what we felt off some of our surveys, some of our feedback from others, of things that we wanted to present to the board tonight, of what we feel a vision should look like. He also asked, was asked to, hey, when you talk about the soccer program, could you talk about maybe some of the hurdles we're facing there? He's got, he's got some slides to put forward for you in front of that. So, at this point, I'll be quiet. I'll turn it over to Aaron Sullivan. And then any questions you've got for Aaron regarding our athletics.
Okay, thanks. Hello, everyone. I guess if we can go to the next slide. So, this was the survey we put together, like Mike said, the likes, kids, what the kids liked about our, our programs, you know, fun, they enjoyed them. The kids, I'm assuming that are out for sports, enjoy the coaches, and just enjoyed hanging out with their peers and their friends. Dislikes, again, the uniforms, which we are on a four-year rotation and there isn't a varsity program that doesn't have new uniforms or uniforms that aren't any older than four years now. Now, the problem we have is, we've always, since I've been here, passed them down to the JV and fresh soft levels now. And I think those are the ones that we're getting most of the complaints from. And Melissa and I have talked about trying to work into the budget ways we can, we can find uniforms for those kids, because it just doesn't work when you have juniors and seniors wearing these uniforms. I mean, they're just, the uniforms are too big for the kids and, you know, some of the sports, it's after four years, the uniforms aren't in any condition to, yeah. Transportation.
I would also say that that popped up through seventh and eighth too, was putting a uniform rotation in there too. So, there may have been some like lapse in that rotation, but I think reestablishing that and getting that back in place is something that's gotta be fixed.
Transportation issues, this kind of goes with the, the boys soccer program. The IHHS say we start two weeks before school starts. So, those kids have trouble, some of them getting to practice before school starts, you know. So, I think last year when we had to forfeit the season, we've got to let these other programs or other schools know if we're gonna have a team or not. And we had four, five, seven, nine kids at the first, first week of practice. And I'm like, then they're asking me, are you gonna have a team? And we have a tournament that next week, and I'm, you know, I'm sorry, right now we don't. And I've got to give them an opportunity to find somebody else to replace us, so they're not losing names. So, if that makes sense.
For some of our kids that aren't interested in soccer too, transportation can be a real issue for them.
The coaches, some of them don't like the coaches we have. Work home conflicts are, is a big issue with our kids. You know, when you get to high school, demands of playing a sport, you're there two hours a night. Mom and dad want you working, or you've got to be home babysitting your little brother or sister. We bring into that problem. I've asked the coaches to try and be as flexible as they can with that. And then some activities are viewed more important than others. I think that's just, some of the, some of the teams don't feel they're as supported as maybe the football program, which has the band there that night. They have the cheer team there that night. So, there's a lot more people there than, I think they're, they, they feel like they're supported more, or the football team's supported more. But when they have a band concert or where they go to a basketball game on the road, it's, it's the same thing. It's, you know, we don't have a lot of student body there at away games, even in football or basketball. So, I just don't think they understand that. But looking at, you know, we believe we can grow and we're gonna be competitive with all our programs. And like anything, I think it takes time and, you know, if we can get some consistent coaches and have some success to create a positive culture for our programs. And I know the last time I was here specifically, we were asked about the vision of all our, our soccer team. Well, this is, Jake and I meet with all the fall, winter, and spring coaches, and, you know, this is what we want to see. You know, we, we want the kids to be proud of, you know, that, we, I tell our kids, we don't, you're not just representing your North Boone football team or your basketball team, but your school, your community, and, and make sure that you're representing well. You know, absolutely, we want to make it fun for everybody. We're doing the best we can to provide coaches, the best coaches we can, we can have for each program. The next bullet point, you know, we want our kids to learn how to handle winning and losing. We'd love to see every, every program have quality facilities and equip, and equipment. You know, I think our indoor facilities are second to none around the conference, but our, you know, outdoor facilities could certainly use an upgrade. And then ultimately, you know, we just want a program that all our players, students, parents, coaches, administrators, and community members can be part of. Vision for the next three years, you know, like I said, again, we'd like to attract and retain the best coaches we can. We'd love to have more, more participation in all our sports. And again, improve the facilities and equipment yearly as best possible. To the soccer program, and you guys stop me if you have any questions. One of the biggest challenges are, and I didn't put this in here, and I don't know why, but, is our, our North Boone U Sports does an amazing job of getting kids ready in softball and baseball. Well, that's softball happens the same time soccer does. So, for example, we've got, our building is booked from January through April, every Sunday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM with either a baseball team or a softball U Sports team. So, they are, you know, we don't have a soccer program down there. So, I think a lot of times those kids fall in love with softball or baseball down there, and it's, by the time they get to the high school, and we're asking them to play soccer, and then they're going out and they're playing against club players and teams that are very good, and we've got to play in a very competitive conference, and, you know, we're not competing real well. After three or four weeks, it's not a lot of fun, and we end up having kids quit, or just tough keeping our numbers up. Competition for playing time is nonexistent. And right now, I, you know, we have 15, 16 kids out. The kids need to go to work, they need to watch their younger brothers, you know, they know that they're gonna play. So, they don't always show up out on the practice field for football and they'll go in, they'll have 10 kids out there. So, I think that's, that's another problem we're facing right now. Again, childcare, summer camp, we've talked, and Melissa and I have talked about possibly, for the boys especially, maybe busing kids over from different areas so that they can, they can be at practice in the summer before the season starts, or once practice starts and we're still not in school. And then I put in there, spring weather for all our sports, baseball, softball, track, soccer. It's not a lot of fun to play in. We start games late March and it's 30 degrees out, and kids are, you know, we're not, we're not competing, we're gonna be 10 to nothing, it's 30 degrees out, and it's not, it's not a lot of fun to be out there. And I think we lose kids to that. And then again, the facilities, you know, I do think we're, we are looked at as inferior around the conference with our uniforms, with our facilities, and I, you know, students are a little embarrassed by it. I think that plays a part into it as well. Solutions, I was asked that, to increase participation. I think the big one is to reach out to the North Boone U Sports program and see if anyone would be interested in starting a little kids program for the third and fourth graders like they do for softball, maybe in soccer. So, the kids get a passion for that sport at an early age and continue to play it, or more competitive by the time they, they reach high school. We are working with the middle school program and the coach over there to keep interest. I had the PE teachers talk with the students who might not be involved in the spring sport, see if they would be interested. And then of course, have the, the girls or boys in the soccer program, reach out to any friends, peers they have, and try and get them to come out. You know, I'd give it a shot for a week or two, if you don't like it, no hard feelings, but why don't you come out and see what it's all about? We did meet with, with soccer girls about a month ago, and I believe we're gonna have enough to field a team this year. We had about 20 kids show up for that meeting. And, you know, another issue we're dealing with is, our enrollment has gone down 60 students, 60 students in two years, which I think has, has affected us. I don't know if there's any questions anybody has for me, or?
So, Sally talked us a little bit about solutions, increasing participation. I was surprised to see that you didn't put on that list, hiring teachers that, that approach.
We have, and me and Jake talked a lot about that. We have hired some teachers this past few years that are coaching, doing a nice job. Of course, I do think that's a big asset can help, and we're, and we're trying our best to do that.
And I'd also like to say, you know, if we're talking about teachers, you know, there's some times when we put it out there, if you only get two applicants, you're not gonna be able to say, well, if you're coaching. So, you know, you have to be reasonable as far as, you know, what will we get? We can't acquire teachers, we can't say you're gonna be required to come in here and teach and coach, especially for somebody who has no experience in, you know, what we have available as well.
That's, that's really, I should just stop right there. That's actually what I'm talking about. That's the old North Boone way, to bring in a teacher, a first or second year situation that's not tenured. What I'm, we're asking them to teach and mentor them along the way and coach a spot. What happened if we went out and found somebody with complex LA's experience to come in on a football program at 10, 15 years as a first year football coach? Why wouldn't we move to, keep from doing things the old North Boone way, instead hire good quality people that are coming to build a program for us that have experience doing it and pay them what they're worth?
Yeah, correct. And we're trying to hire good quality people to come in and, I mean, the priority, the priority is education. But, so, let's say I hire somebody who comes in and doesn't have any past experience in, you know, in baseball, and baseball's the only position we have available. I'm not gonna say, well, you're gonna come in and two years later, we're gonna have you start coaching baseball, even though you have no knowledge of baseball whatsoever. I guess, I mean, to me, that's what you're telling me I need to do.
That's a glass hat full approach. If I know I'm gonna need a boys basketball coach, right, and I have a couple of teaching positions that I know are unopen, why wouldn't I go out for somebody that was qualified right from the start?
We've tried, we've tried that. I mean, two years ago, we had a special ed position available, just so you're aware. And we tried to hire somebody who had some coaching experience, and we couldn't draw that person in.
Here's the other thing too.
It's not like we're not trying.
We do, we do have a clause in our contract too that says, if we hire a certified teacher and you've got a coaching position that is, and I'm gonna do a bad job of this language, but you've got a coaching position that is currently being filled by someone outside of the NVBA, that if that person wants something, they can put something to us in writing. So, we can interview them, and if they have higher qualifications, we can move them in. But going back to, back to what you said, we could, we could try that approach. I think now you come into kind of some other things that I think in my head of, how do we attract and retrain, retain quality, quality coaches? And I think that that might be a discussion we have to have, probably as a board once, because the other thing too is probably gotta do, this doesn't guarantee us better, but I think it's something that's a piece of this entire puzzle, that when we walk to contract, maybe these are some, some discussions we hold as a board to say, hey, how do we do some of these things so we can attract and retain? Because I think that that's got a piece of it too.
We do ask in our interviews, you know, is there anything requested in other than, other than teaching? I mean, we ask that question. So, it's not, I, I just want to make sure we know and understand that we're not avoiding that.
So, here's the other thing too that I remember.
So, here's the other thing, too, that I remember.
Should we start off the conversation by saying that we bring in first year teachers and ask them to coach?
Yeah.
That's exactly the wrong approach, that's why we're...
That's not what I said we do.
So, that's how you started out with your response?
No, it's not.
So, here's the other thing, too. One of the things that we used to have were real strong pools of people to draw from, and then that coaching quality could be something, too, that we could help differentiate. Our pools right now, sometimes you're looking at one or two, three pool, and so you're looking for a solid, solid teacher, too. So, when, when those pools used to be larger, it sometimes gave us a little more leveraging way to do some of that.
So, are we making the argument this is a vision for improving it, or it's just why we are where we are?
This is our big vision, where we wanna go. There's still steps that, that need to go into this yet, to make this happen. I think attracting some of the coaches at the high school, you know, the middle school, we've got a lot of talent in the district, we really do. The middle school coaches, you know, they had, they, they coached half as long, and their stipends almost as, you know, good as high school ones. So, I think that keeps them from coming up and to the high school and putting all the time in that they have to at the high school, you know, at the high school level.
So, I mean, actually, Sully, that was the next thing I was gonna get to, I was kinda hoping that that will also be here, so that's something we could address in our next teacher's contract. I get that, right, of course.
Yeah, I understand that.
You know, I get the segments between what they get for six weeks versus what we get for six months, it's ridiculous, but those are, that's why I was hoping to see it.
I didn't wanna, I'm lying about the facilities, I didn't wanna throw that, I mean, but that does play anyway. And, and there's, there's the next steps, and I've kinda had a lot of conversations with, I also think image goes a long ways, too. If the kids have good, and I'm just gonna, it sounds shallow, but if they have good uniforms, they have good practice facilities, that's a good thing, they feel good about themselves, I think the image would help us, too. I think attracting, retaining the coaches have got a new piece of it. I think as we continue to put emphasis towards our, our facility, I wrote down a whole bunch of things here, as we start to put more emphasis onto some of our facilities, that they're, they've got good facilities that they can practice on, play on, all that type of thing, I think that that'll go a long way. Finding ways to make kids feel good about what they're doing to become back involved in that school, I think is all a piece of this. I think another thing, I talked to Sully about, and Jayden Dale, what are we doing to support our, support our coaches? That's not an easy job. How do we, how do we bring them in? How do we mentor them? How do we check up, see how things are going? Is there professional development things we need to discuss? The one piece of this survey that was not touched, I didn't touch coaches yet, and we've talked about maybe putting an exit survey together, how do we support our coaches? Because if you wanna attract and retain them, you better have a good support network that informs, too. So, those are all things that I've kinda jotted down. This kinda becomes the administrative out branch to reach next. I'm open to more, and more ideas if, if the board wanted to consider to talk about this further, a retreat, or a committee type thing, or if we get some involvement going. I don't, I don't wanna yell, oh, fix our facilities, we're, everything will be better. It's a multifaceted approach, there's a lot of things that have gotta go into, to how to, how to give those sports programs a good, good turnaround and create the right culture. And I don't, I don't wanna beat the stipend big to death, but, you know, I don't, I'm not saying that our middle school stipends are, they're overpaid, they're not... Cut 'em. They're paired with...
Please don't.
The other schools in our conference, I think the biggest difference is the high school coaches, with the high school coaches in the rest of the conference, they're just... Time spent, stress, everything that goes into it, how do we make... The IHSA says you have to be here twenty-five days, you have twenty-five contact days with the kids, you know? Middle school coaches don't have to do that, so we're here all summer, and just adds up...
The Big Northern did help to provide leadership, a leadership conference and for coaches to network for both coaches, and then a switch, flip flops, one year for coaches, next year for athletes, correct? And they, they've been helping to do that, to try to, you know, develop leadership in coaches, and then help the network as well.
And then we do offer the coaches to go to clinics and pay for those, and, you know... Working collaboration, too, I think with boosters, the youth sports programs, Molly, Allison, you guys have both coached, you know, kinda what, what goes on with us, and I, I'm putting you two totally on the spot, is there anything? I just think it's a multifaceted...
I know, I stopped coaching just because of the time commitment, it was ridiculous, and, I mean, the pay wasn't that great, and I just didn't have the time once I had kids, I was like, no, I can't continue to do that, and I loved coaching.
Finding ways to get kids proud of and back involved in their school, I think is key, that'll help us, too, academically.
Absolutely.
But I also know that a good coach, and a good coach that builds a good culture, tends to bring more kids into that program. And I think that's what, you know, we, I tell our head, you know, don't ask the kids to work harder than you're gonna as a head coach, so, you know, if you're gonna ask the kids to be in the weight room all, all, you know, off-season, you need to be in the weight room, and I, I just, I think it wears, and coaches get burnt out.
Most conference schools have varsity coaches for basketball, football, softball, basketball, volleyball, and paid varsity assistants as well, right? Which North Boone takes on. They're usually about, North Boone usually has volunteers as assistants, they're not paid stipends, correct?
We have, or volunteers and paid assistant varsity coaches, yes.
For football?
Yes.
What, what are their sports?
Um, you know... Is there a varsity basketball assistant?
There's been, you know, assistants, you know, it's, other than...
We have varsity basketball, then we have the JV basketball coach and the freshman coach.
Most teams in the Big Northern have varsity assistants for all those schools that are paid people?
Correct, yeah.
To help out the programs.
Another thing that we were doing that I guarantee you was deterring people from coaching, was if, if you have, I believe it's a zero to four years of experience, and then there's a second step of like five to eight, and then, you know, eight and above. I know for a while, our district was squelching, really squelching people from taking, so if you were a freshman basketball coach, and you were in year three, if you went to a JV coach, our district was starting back at zero. And that was deterring people from, from taking coaching. I've not done that, I've followed the years of experience that they've had. There was something, too, with, if you were a coach before, not giving years of experience, not giving years of experience, that would help with attracting the team.
So, last question I have is why don't we play, play soccer on the football field we have?
Dimensions, they're not, it's not playing.
So, when I was here, we did two studies for the two previous superintendents. IHSA doesn't have a set dimension for a soccer field.
Oh, yeah.
It has, it has guidelines.
Now, there's an actual dimension that we have to follow.
So, that's changed?
Yes. Rusty could, Mike could answer that better, I mean, he sets the field up, but that's the reason they're not, they're not up there. The other thing, too, I think we watch is the amount of use that goes to the turf, right? Or is not so much... You know, no, they'd be up there if they could, but it's just, I mean, with the wood pulse we have in, there's just not enough room on the sideline for the kids.
When we think about the things we should do, can, can we confidently say like we haven't been doing them up to this point? Is there a reason we haven't been doing them up to this point?
Like, yeah, you know...
If our, if our idea is, if we go back to the slide on what, what we plan to do, really attract better coaches, reach out to other sport groups, have we not been doing those?
So, I'll be honest with you, one that I didn't see at all, and this is, I'll take it quickly, uniforms. I didn't realize that was an issue. I, when I heard that in September, my comment was, well, why aren't we doing that? I guess it just, it wasn't there in front of me. Our contract, that one is, that's, that's what our contract is right now, but there's nothing to say that moving forward, we can't do that. Yes, we can continue to work with some of those things, like working with North Boone U Sports, that's an easy one, collaboration with Booster Clothes, those are all things, absolutely, we can do that. I think as the survey went on, the thing that jumped at me a little bit was the image piece, that maybe, you know, just the way our kids see and feel, and I, I, I don't know, I guess, could be totally wrong with this, I'm not... No, I, you know, the uniform, oh, absolutely, and, you know, the kids are, like I said, the varsity kids are, they're in nice uniforms, it's the JV and the freshman, which is everywhere. We gotta run, and when I heard it that day, jumped out at me a little bit, when we pulled that survey out, that one really jumped, I was like, I'm not just seeing it once or twice, I'm seeing it over and over and over. The boosters have helped us out a ton with that, and, you know, and talking with Melissa, you know, if we could go to like a generic uniform for the JV and freshman team, that is a little less expensive, and, you know, we, I had two customers come in and were pricing football uniforms, I mean, the top of the line football uniforms for forty-two of them are fifteen thousand dollars, I mean, it's, it's crazy, the price of these uniforms, so, you know, and I was like, you know, I don't wanna waste your time, just give me the middle, you know, that's way out of our price range, so, and... The other thing that came up, that we talked a lot about, was the size of our school, how many different ways we pull kids in different directions. And sometimes, like, we want more activities and sports, but we're having the same kids over and over. So, sometimes, if you've got a large softball program right now, some of our other activities suffer, so that does hit us a little bit, and I think you guys talked, I figured they're running into that. Our, you know, our softball program, we invest in the building right now, and our JV team has played like eight games the last two years, because these other teams do not have enough kids to have two levels, because they have soccer and track as well, and, you know, so we are pulling from three different sports, and right now, we just don't have enough kids for all the sports we're offering. You pull them a lot of different, there's a lot of different things for kids to do.
Mike, Sully, what, what would it take to put together a comprehensive plan, or who would it take to put together a comprehensive plan to identify some concrete action items, and maybe some tiers of costs associated with that, so that we had some, I think, some really strategic kind of points for moving forward on? And, and I would say everything on the table, there's something like stipends and uniforms and all of these things are put in a collective pool and really hashed through.
These are our priorities? Yeah, absolutely, be a part of that. I'm gonna tell you, I kinda like it, a cross-section, because it's, it's a little bit bigger than I see or know, but I could work on some sort of committee or something with the spring, probably involve the booster, North Boone parents, some coaches, maybe a board member or two to work on that. But I don't want it to just come from me, I think there's gotta be other people that kinda help put into that. But that, I mean, I think the survey's got us started, I think our conversations here have got us started. I see some hurdles that we've got in front of us, but I, I... The uniforms have come a long way, I think, so, we're getting close there, so... And I know we've got good support. And I know we've had a, you know, the backstops, the softball diamond, it's huge, and just see those upgrades yearly, I think, would help, and, yeah, we'll get there.
Just out of curiosity, you said the survey was sent to parents?
Middle school, parents.
Of middle school and high school parents?
And high school parents, and middle school, high school kids.
So, I don't believe I saw one as the parent of a high school kid, did anyone else participate?
I did, but it seems overwhelming that these answers are from students, though.
Yeah.
When you read, when you read the comments that they're making.
And I guess my other thing on the survey is, I'm not a survey generator, and I'm, in this case, a recipient of one. I found it seemed to me like it was a lot of free form, not much stuff collated, and I'm wondering, as a board member, I had trouble digesting this, how in the, in its current format, how do you even take anything in this as actionable?
So, well, it, it was more informational, not as, not as an action piece, and I'll be honest with you, I...
But it should be actionable for administration.
Right, so, so really what I've done is, I pulled several other area districts that have used similar surveys, we put it together in a Google Doc here, looking for the very similar questions to what other districts have used, that have kinda gone along some of the same process. That's as deep as the research went on it. If you, if we wanna do a bigger, if you, if we wanna do a more encompassing survey, I would say, yeah, you, we probably could go...
I guess even simple things like what sports would you like to see?
Yeah.
Should've been a drop-down list, that a person could've checked off and not, and you could've made sense out of it.
On the equity form, no, you've gotta leave them some room for others, of what they put. So, then the generator does, is if you wrote anything else, it'll add in anything else that somebody wrote, too?
I just, I think the thought behind it is really good, but, but I would want it actionable, I would want something that I could...
And I would agree with you, it's probably, and I'll, the other thing that I'll say is, is if you look, it's probably heavy seven, eight student generated, because I think maybe seven, eight gave it a lot of time for kids to take it, I don't know, I could be wrong. So, we push it up to high school kids, again. If you guys didn't get it, we used our email format for all of our email blasts that go out through school messenger to try to get to seven through twelve parents. But again, if, if the survey, if we wanna grow a more encompassing survey, because I think that that could be something that would be official, I'd be open to that idea as part of maybe that committee, too.
Yeah.
Because I want, I want the data accurate to reflect what we need.
Like I said, I thought it was a good idea, I just had trouble going through it, and in my mind, if I were wanting to act on it, it would be really hard to...
Yeah, so, so, one was, it had to be run by our equity for the TAV visiting, we have to have that every four years, that's law. So, as long as it's there, I was trying to keep it short, brief, but to the point. I also tried to keep it, it's very open-ended, I was trying not to draw or push or be even considered pushing kids to a response of some sort, I wanted it to come from kids and parents to thoughts, so it was, it was open-ended. We did run a completely, much more thorough survey, too.
And I guess the other comment I wanted to make was, was about the vision, and having had kids go through the Hananeega School District and myself, and also the North Boondow, what I get concerned when I look at this, and then specifically having a son that participated in the, you know, like the junior tackle program and the junior cheer, and then in high school soccer and things like that, what I see is, and I wanna make sure when you go to develop your vision, is really two different things. If I think on the, what I saw is the issues in high school soccer, were related around the coaching side, it was related around, and I think you stated it, about, the kids did go out there and they played against club players, and there was a lot of the stuff, you just get, you know, you get beat up week after week. But with regards to soccer, I think they would love to play on the high school, you know, have, to have a nice field, but I never heard that, I never heard things about uniforms, I never heard what seems to me, if I had, if you were asking me, and I was saying, how would you build the soccer program? It would be a lot about establishing, first of all, getting a long-term head coach, which I think we need in all those sports, and developing the youth programs...
Absolutely.
So that you have that feeder thing coming in, and to me, you only get that when you have a visionary head coach, varsity coach, sending the vision going downstream. And that's what I see missing in a lot of our stuff, and, and so for me, like, facilities on the soccer, I think it would be nice to play, but I think you're, you would be missing it if that was the primary reason, or better uniforms, because it was the other thing, and that, and the other thing to me was only addressed by a longer-term piece.
That's not what I was saying, I didn't, I wasn't saying...
Well, no, I just, but now...
Just giving you all the...
But on the other half of that, if I were to flip over to the track side, track side is obvi-, yeah, that's only gonna be resolved with facilities, or working out an agreement, maybe short-term, with like a Velveter North or something, to where you could jump-start good facilities that you could host home track meets, and try to build that up, and again, none of these things would go away from having strong head coaches, but in that regard, you would have it, so I, I don't see a, you know, a one-size-fits-all, and in some programs, I see it completely different, I don't, you know, and to hear, to me, like the emphasis on the uniforms, or the emphasis on other things, that isn't where I would be in my experience with the, with the soccer program, so...
And we have opened that job up and have had no applicants.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, we're doing what we can, and we're looking, and... But I think you're right on that, Tom, too.
I would be interested if you're going to...
I would be interested if you're gonna, as Tom said, what sports would they like to see if they had to type them in? So I don't know if you're gonna turn those into some sort of percentage. There were thirty-seven for bowling and forty-nine percent for male swimming. But, I, what I'm also kinda curious about, and I didn't, I didn't, I guess it's sort of answered here, to what extent will you guys talk about what can we do? Cause of the question, if you do not participate, please tell us why. Almost none of those are anything we could do anything about. I'm wondering, even if we do this with all of those very frank comments, is this anything? I mean, not that we shouldn't try, but have you had those discussions about when you look at that and the things that you mentioned that are difficult for students to participate? There's four pages of things that sound like that's not really within our control.
Yeah, some of them are not. Then you focus on some of the ones that you could... What's that?
An example, I'm not sure what you're asking me to talk to.
I used to, but I had to get a job. I don't have the motivation. I'm on the D A's team. I don't want to. I'm not athletic because they're all boring. I stopped enjoying playing sports, so I quit. I'm, you know...
There's a couple in there that are inappropriate too, but...
I didn't see any of those, but I just didn't think like...
It just really was, it was a culmination of just everything, cause that's the way the, the survey generator pops it up, so, um, I just didn't hide anything. I gave it to you as full as we got it. But yeah, so I think what you do is you pick the few that you do control and, or, or you think could make a difference and focus on those. You can't possibly hit them all. So you pick, I guess you pick a few and pick a few that you think you can make a difference. I was intrigued a little bit about, is it possible to offer some transportation and some camp stuff? But, you know, then trying to hit the times at all the different camps is tough too, but, um, if you run them too, at the, at the same time you run, cause we do run buses for some of our summer programs, i- is there a way to kinda do something in the format of what we do with activity buses after school? I don't know. If that takes some creativity and some, some conversations with them, so...
We actually did that, right? We actually did that, right? Set, had practices stacked, so the freshman and JV were first, so I think you can take activity buses on.
And, and that's one thing, at least at the middle school level, I know we have involvement because we offer our activity buses on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now, there are practices Monday, Wednesday, but that's fewer times that kids have to have that carpool situation. So, a great activity for this, and if you want me to be involved in it?
You're leading.
More than that. A really great activity, and I did this with our S I P, um, summer activities there is just to coordinate all this into strengths, weaknesses, what we can control and what we can't control. And then, and just kinda analyze it that way and pull out the things that we can change. You know, we have kids that don't participate because they have to go home and watch younger brothers or sisters. Is there an option we have with involving those families with our Y Care at a discounted rate? Offering, you know, different transportation opportunities, really some brainstorming. I think if you get coaches involved, teachers involved, bringing some parents and kids who, you know, the parents would love for their kids to be able to participate, but unfortunately with the economy, they've gotta be at home because mom and dad have to work. One thing I would like to say about, when we hire new teachers, we get very excited when we get those applications and it says five years' experience coaching wrestling, ten years' experience doing this. Where we lose them is we can't compete in what we can offer them as far as salary sometimes. So we might lose them to another district. We do give them credit for their years, of course, as a teacher. I lost a really good guy. I couldn't hire him because he went to another district because he was gonna make mom and dad. And it was, it was a tough decision. It was still a small school situation, but we get really, we do look at those applications. What are your experiences? It's part of the online application, you know, extracurriculars you're interested in or would be willing to coach. Those people go to the top of our list. You know, it's, it's not every day, you know, you have the community members who start working in the district and, you know, you're able to work together and bring up the teams as middle schoolers and then hand them over and kinda see them again as you become a high school coach. That's, that's, that's what we used to do and have coaches in the district that were also teachers for many years. I will say, you know, we hired a good guy at the high school who is now the varsity wrestling coach. My son talks more about wrestling this year than he did last year because he sees his coach on a regular basis and he's a positive influence. So when we have been able to hire people, Coach Drusopoulos, you know, he's made a very positive impact on the kids. So you're right, if we can hire people and have that years' experience, cause he was a wrestling coach in a previous district and he brought in this, this great, these great fundamentals, I mean, I see a calendar, and you get, and you get those great people, that wrestling program is gonna grow, it's gonna continue to.
I think they go hand in hand. If you're a quality coach, you probably do the quality teaching vice versa.
I think maybe the reverse, Neil, I guess we'll go back to my original point is if we constantly make a case that we can't get quality coaches because we can't figure out a way to get them into, into quality teaching positions. We're talking about all this other stuff, all this other money and all this stuff, cause we're all gonna be where we are today. Let's talk about it in a different term, about being someplace else when this is over and all the stuff that we need to do to take, make that happen. That's really the challenge for Sully and Jake and for you and for Mike, when we start negotiating the contracts, figuring out a way to get around this so we can bring in the people we want to be, so we can have all these other things.
And, and another big piece of it is that everything is what's most important for everybody. You know, some, some people, you know, it's a little bit different for everybody, but I think the common trend is we wanna be proud of our teams, we wanna be proud of this district, and how do you get to that?
This survey will tell you how to do that.
It's just gonna hope, it's a start. It's a start.
All right. Any other questions for Sully?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sully. Great, that brings us to the levy. Melissa will probably be presenting to us soon.
Yes, Melissa has updated our levy with a little more detail. She'll provide that.
Okay. I won't, I'm not gonna go for the whole presentation. I have a couple of slides here that are updated. Just kind of more for your information, we are considered a Pito district, so when you go to things or you hear people talking, we are a tax capped district. That started in nineteen ninety-six and essentially that means is that we can essentially only grow by whatever C P I is every year. So we talk about, and new construction and E A B, but some districts can grow much larger than the one point nine or two point one percent, whereas North Boone is a tax capped district. So just kinda keep that in mind as we're going through. The other thing, we're also, like I said, C P I, E A B, and then the new property E A B, which we talked about, we're kinda, cause we're still estimated, we still haven't had that information, but we're estimating that. Another big piece of the funding for North Boone is that evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. It's now moved to more of an individual basis of like low income, special ed, you know, also all those factors play into the money that we get each year. It also takes into account our local resources, so how much money are we bringing in through taxes? What is our E A B? Right now, our target that the state says to make adequacy, so, so all students, you know, we're meeting the needs of the children in the district is about twenty million and the state says we're about sixty-three percent adequacy. So with this state funding, local funding, we're only at about sixty-three. So we're still considered a tier-one district, so we're getting new money every year to kinda help close that adequacy gap. When we talk about the levies, we always request an amount and then we get an extension. So when I talked about being a tax capped district, that, this is what that looks like. I ask for a lot more to make sure that we don't leave any money on the table. And then at the end of the day, I usually March, April, I'll set something up and says, say, here's what your E A B really was and here's what you're really gonna get for your levy. But we always levy more, we balloon it up to make sure that we don't leave any money. So this was last year's, just kind of as reference. This is our tax rates over the years. As you can see, we kinda peaked up in two thousand sixteen, but we've made conscious efforts, the board's made conscious efforts to decrease those over the years. And that's no different than this year. People have all three of our options. It looks like our tax levy will go down, or the tax rate will go down again this year. This is the abatement of the bonds and we've talked about this. One of the big decisions we need to make tonight is whether we're gonna abate that additional C P I or keep it in the district. I did wanna make a note, I misspoke at one of our meetings, we did not abate any C P I last year because we had the bus purchases, so I apologize. We did not, the year before, we did abate that extra C P I. So you can kinda see there, abatement one and abatement two is the abatement that the board chose to do with that capital development money, that about twelve or two million that came in. That's that planned abatement that every year will go out. Next year will be our first year that we have two abatements, so about one point one million. This year it's about one point one million that we're planning on abating. So here's our options for higher tax levy. Option one, we have about a six point nine percent tax rate. This option is we would balloon levy, we would capture that C P I, the new E A B, new construction, but we would only abate what is planned to abate. So it would be about that one point one million. Option two, we would capture everything, but then we would turn around and abate about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that one point nine percent C P I, we would turn around and abate it back to the taxpayers. That decreases our tax rate to about six point eight four or seventy-eight percent. So slightly lower than option one. And option three, I put, I still left it up here, I do not recommend option three, as I told you guys all, because at this point, we're leaving money on the table, so we'll never be able to recapture that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, like forever moving forward will be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars less. So if you wanted to, to create a bigger impact for the taxpayers, it would be option two. I've, I've recommended option one for the board, just because I feel like we've got some upcoming projects. We talked about what, if we do, if we don't abate, what will we do with that extra hundred and seventy-five thousand? And so here's some things that we've kinda talked about. Curriculum, we know we're carrying here, we're, we're starting the standards work, we're starting to move some of that stuff. And so we know E A L, E L A, and social studies are coming up, K through eight, the next year. Technology, we're still moving that to that one-to-one model at the high school.
Can I chime in on each one, just to be even a little more specific a little bit? So curriculum, E L A, what our tentative plan right now is, we would have a five through eight E L A adoption this year. We'd have an elementary adoption for E L A next year?
Social studies next year, elementary the year after.
Elementary, E L A the following.
K four the year after.
I flipped them. So we've still got that, and again, we hold placeholders for those adoptions every single year. We're expected to be within those budgets. I did put personnel in there, here's why. I know some of the things that are coming down the line as we start to hit our core of our instruction, both in science, math, and now E L A, is instructional coaches could become a thing that could be on the horizon. It also could be, we could be looking at interventionists too. R T I is gonna become a big thing that, and it's not even called R T I anymore, it's called M T S S. But that is also an S E L piece. And down there, number five is S E L. We've got the committee that's beginning to look at that. So I do anticipate there could be some personnel-type things coming from S E L or M T S S, the, the interventions that we need to do for kids that could be additional resources that are needed for those, so, and then I'll let you go to the next one and I'll talk a little bit.
Which one are you on?
Technology.
Technology. So we're still looking at the one-to-one at the high school and then possibly personnel, you know, when you suddenly expand that, you're not sure.
Yeah, and as right now, we don't plan on growing personnel, but as devices grow, personnel could be something that we need to look at for support. We also know that next year, we've got to grow bandwidth. We're starting to hit some of our peak bandwidth. It's not affecting us, but we know if we add more devices next year, bandwidth's gotta grow. So those are some expectations that are coming there.
Transportation, we have the bus purchases, which will be coming later in the board meeting tonight, but we, this is the, the last, I think, big year where we're gonna purchase ten, nine plus buses. Moving forward, it'll, it'll shrink down a little bit with our rotation, but this year we do have the bus purchases. Facilities, we've got some parking lots that we know, kind of, and we're, we're still working on some of those lists, but middle school, Capren, district office, and the sewer project at Capren, which we're waiting for quotes on that. Personnel, and then the district athletic facilities. And then we also have that fifty thousand, fifty thousand matching grant on the state this year in February. So we've got some things going on there with facilities.
Some of our facility ones are kind of larger costs too, so as we start to hold our facility meetings, trying to flush that out and make some recommendations there.
And then the last one's the S E L, which we're not sure what's gonna be needed out of that, but that's a social, emotional, like we talked about, making, making the kids, and not just the kids, it's the staff and all of that. So those were some of the needs I thought we could foresee with that hundred and seventy-five thousand if we do not abate the C P I. The last thing real quick is the property tax relief grants. This is, was out last year, it's again this year, it's due in January. I would recommend that we do apply for this. If we are granted this, then we have to go forward and make additional abatements with that grant money. They have, the state has about fifty-three million or so to give away and we're ranked about sixty-third out of a hundred, eight-hundred-and-fifty-one schools. Last year, I think like the top twenty-seven or so took the money, but you never know, somebody might pass it up and they have an opportunity to get that, so. Any questions for me on that?
So I wanted to do one clarify. Even with tonight, like tonight, we have to pass our levy.
Yes.
Through our future discussions, even if the board were to decide to debate, they can still do that in the future meeting, right?
Yes, I think we have until February to abate. So if you guys, if, if you, we have to pass the levy. And the levy, unless you choose the option three where you wanna not take C P I, which I'm not recommending, the levy will not change. It's the abatement, which, which, which would happen and that would have to happen in January anyways. So the levy either way would stay the same, it would just be that abate that piece, what, what you guys wanted to do with that, so. Any questions?
Sully, I remember correct, one of the things we talked about, you guys went when we walked out of business services meeting, was to identify a project that we would use the C P I money for. The winner is?
The winner is, well...
In our conversations, we've talked a lot about the big facility projects, whether it's parking lots you wanna grab or something like that. What I've kinda talked to Melissa about is it's holding five-hundred-thousand-dollar placeholders between your sales tax and your O and M over the next five years to pick large projects off on the facility side.
Yeah, I would say sitting in facilities meetings, I would say that the facilities is probably, even if it, if it, the big stuff and even the everyday stuff, I think our O and M budget could, could use that, that money to...
So, and again, like a little further question, we've had the placeholder at, I wanna say seven-hundred-and-fifty towards the Capren parking lot, and I really kinda pressed our architect a little further on it. He seemed to be closer now to thinking it's, it's five-hundred, if we're in the neighborhood of five-hundred, so, which kinda then says, if, if we place the holder at five-hundred over the next seven years for budgeting and things like that, let's pick some of the big, big things off. So I hear you're saying per unit? It's one option.
Carl, any questions? Clarifications, Brian? Tom?
Questions or opinions?
Opinions, opinions and questions. We're hoping that you have something to say.
We talked at business services about it and I guess I'm gonna start this discussion or what my opinion is on this, is that I feel we should work within last year's budget unless we have something specific brought up to us. And when I look at what you have out there, I don't disagree, those are all good things. But what I'm looking for is not a placeholder, because we're not asking for the taxpayers to give us a placeholder, we're asking for them to take money today out. And in my mind, what that is, is that it's a, it's a specific project that the board has prioritized and said, yeah, I want, it's worth it for me to take that money. And I don't feel that I have that, so I'm much more leaning towards option two. And just the three other quick things that I would have is that, one of the things is that, and I, until probably Glenn spoke at our business meeting a couple of times ago, I thought about looking at that declining percentage. And I think what Glenn emphasized in that meeting was about looking at, well, what's the amount, the levy amount that you're looking at? And when I look at that, we levied nine point two million last year is what it ended up being.
Right, right.
And this year, we're asking for nine point seven million. So we are asking for half a million dollars more in levy than what we asked for last year. The other thing that I look at is on bus purchases, we had budgeted, which was a big part of, to me, what we spent C P I on. And last year, we budgeted seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
This year we did, yeah.
This year, I mean, we did. When I run the numbers, you have further down in our presentation tonight, our bus purchases are about six-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand.
Plus the trade.
Less about 65,000 for trades, and then I would also take off the 130,000.
Oh, for the...
That we're going to get for state reimbursement. So to me, that's about another $292,000 that we will be under budget in what we had anticipated spending for bus purchases. And I commend you on that, because it's, a lot of that is you're doing analysis and trying to maximize our purchases. But with all of that said, is I still look that we have an extra 300,000, that CPI, to me, would be a placeholder for some very good competing projects, but they haven't been vetted to me at least to the level I'm comfortable on. So I'm much more for the option two, and even then, I still haven't addressed the money the state has given us, and you'd have to help me out on that, Melissa, is it?
Evidence-based funding.
The evidence-based funding, and what's the amount on that?
This year is about 400,000.
That's, two years in a row, we've gotten that extra bump, so I'm comfortable with where we're at in our discussions, to say that this year, my vote would be to abate CPI again this year.
And to speak real quick to the extra 500,000 of this levy this year, when Glenn came in and spoke, he's one of our assessors, and then he had asked, you know, to keep it about even, or 1% above, so the 9.2 million, to keep it about, but to, if, to keep it that way, is almost impossible with our bonds that we have out. So we have that, you know, even with the abatement of the 1% money, we do have the bonds there, plus with the new construction and EAV, that's why it brings it up to about 500,000. So essentially, my guess is what we're actually going to bring in is about 9.4, 9.4 or 5, maybe. So we're probably only going to be about 250,000, which is still over the 1%, but that, that's why it's ballooned up so much, is just because I want to make sure that I capture all that new construction and EAV.
And if you look at that slide, we did it last year, it was about a 200,000, it went up high, and then it was about 200,000.
Yeah, it's kind of like this, yeah.
So that should be pretty accurate.
Yeah.
So.
Any questions?
Ed, any further thoughts? Questions, opinions?
I guess I might, the other stream from Tom is, we asked him, going back with a project that was going to get done with the money, I heard parking lots, and I don't know with this, I don't actually understand how we're going to get those projects accomplished in a couple of years, so I'm going to follow Melissa's recommendation and go with option one.
Mary?
I don't really have any questions. If we're going to do parking lots, I'm okay with not abating it, but we want to see...
Is there some parking lot that needs some attention? Any further questions? Did you give your... Oh!
Fair.
I have always said, I absolutely see, I would be leaning, I would be leaning in the direction that you speak to, that we abate as much as possible, having been in many of those discussions about the extent to which we have bond payments that are due. That said, being a biologist and not being able to fully wrap my mind around it, and trusting Melissa, I have always said that I will go with the recommendation of our business manager, and trust that she knows better than I in these situations. So that would be my personal stance on it. With the understanding that we do have a definite plan for that money, if we're going to capture that and keep that, but the project, and actually, if you could go to the list of five things, SEL, one-to-one, my thinking was, Mike, if those upcoming projects, are those by chance ranked? Because as I looked at those, I thought, I wonder how the board would rank those, and will he be asking for the board to rank those, and...
I didn't put a rank on them.
Okay.
I put them as budget items that I see on the horizon that will be here.
Okay.
And budget for them. Because I think you sometimes have to hit a smattering, I would, let me not smattering. Every one of those areas, I think you've got to continue to plug in, and not just pick, I'm all in on one this year, I'm all in on another this year. Tech continues to be addressed, curriculum continues to be addressed, transportation, we've got to continue to look on that, you know, our facility stuff, we've got things to work on.
That almost looks like a list of board goals, though. Potential board goals.
And you'll notice, a lot of these, too, are coming from strategic planning, too.
Right.
So, and that's what administration uses, is we have the strategic plan, and then we have your guys' support goals, and then we have our department board's goals, and they all kind of line up with the same vision of moving in the same direction, so that you're...
I would like maybe to request that you make a note of those, and if we have the board retreat, that that be maybe a topic of discussion, how we would rank and what we're envisioning.
With it, there's still a technology plan yet to come, because that would be one of the board goals, too, and that's still in discussion.
Do I have, if there's no further questions, do I have a motion?
Good option, you're looking at, Carl. It's either one of us giving our opinions.
No, Tom spoke more eloquently than I can about my feelings towards abatement, and so I won't, I won't even try to...
He developed one.
The, without clear priorities, clear priorities, I think, I think the goals are, certainly have merit, and are important, and are things that we have discussed at all levels of the But not seeing proposals that are actionable within even the short period that we would need to get rolling on them. The sure option of abatement is an area that I'm more comfortable, more comfortable with, with that option two.
Do we have one towards option one?
He said two.
Thanks, Carl, Brian.
Yeah, the scope of the projects that we have, and the number of the projects we have throughout the district, I'm going to lean towards option one. Definitely won't be responsible with the money, but I want to enable our administrators to do what they need to do.
Whoever would like to make a motion, and perhaps the motion is...
To approve option one as presented.
Do we have a motion?
One second.
Thank you, Ed, thank you, Brian. Any discussion? We have a motion to approve our 2019 tax levy with option one. Would not get roll call, please.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsler?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Melissa. That brings us to new business, December 2019 bills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the December 2019 bills?
Who does approve the December bills as presented?
Okay. Motion, a second. A second. Motion by Mahoney, a second by Hazelhurst, roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to P cards.
So I brought the idea of P cards to the business committee, and they decided to bring it to the board. So current, P card stands for procurement card or purchase card. Currently, the district has a credit card account, and those credit cards require receipts each month, and reconciliation each month. We have about three cards in our district. The cards are, the card holder is usually typically a board member or a member of the district. And so the person that's on the cards right now is no longer here, and so we're starting to move towards what, getting somebody else or doing something new. And so as I started trying to get, kind of moving with this, I realized that with the card holder being an individual, it's tied to that individual more so than I feel comfortable, just for everyone's sake, right? It should be tied more to the district's finances and the district, as opposed to a single person. And so that's where we kind of came into this P card system, where it's tied to our AFR, so our audited financial reports, the past three years, they look at that and say, yes, we can loan you money, or this is how it's going to work. So I feel like it's just a much cleaner way of doing it. So it's kind of checks and balances. The cards work the same as a credit card, but on my end, I can say, the district will have an amount of money, and I can say, okay, this school can have this much, and this school can have this much, and then I can see what purchases are coming from those schools or that, or that card. So I have more control, or I can say, this school can only purchase from Amazon, and you can't purchase anywhere else. So you can just control it more than you could a credit card. The bill's supposed to be paid in full each month, which we do anyways, and then we can customize those cards depending on the needs. There are rebates for school districts. This card system is for municipalities and for school districts, so it's built for what we do and kind of how we run business. This card that I'm recommending is a partner with the BMO banks. There are some rebates, there's no fees or charges, and it's backed by the Association for School Business Officials. So other school business officials have vetted into this, and so I kind of feel like it's a safe, reputable card to be with. Like I said, we can limit what we can purchase, we have a monthly spending limit for each card, some vendor limitation, and we have to have a P card holder procedure now, which, if you guys approve it, you'll see that coming probably for approval later, and that has to fall in line with rules and regulations. Just some kind of stats, 18 states, 4 million rebates, lots of people are using this, this system. The eligibility is based on, like I said, our audited reports on our district finances, although we do need board approval to kind of go forward with the process. We can cancel agreement if we need to, and we don't allow, it doesn't allow cash advances. So if somebody has a card, they can only do purchases, and then they'd have to do a P, so it would fall in line with our normal practices that we do. So our next steps would be, if you guys do approve it, we would mail in the application process, and then we would set up the training, and kind of go through the manual and all of that, so. Any questions on that?
We did bring it to the business meeting, yeah.
And all what's news? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Authorizing issuance of an individual procurement card through Bank of Montreal?
So sorry, I'm going to start with you. We approve the first one. We read the resolution. All right. Whereas the Board of Education for North Boone CUSD 200 has the authority to enter into an agreement with the Bank of Montreal for purchasing cards. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education for North Boone CUSD 200, that the treasurer are authorized to enter into an agreement with the Bank of Montreal to secure procurement cards for each authorized employee of the school district under such terms and conditions as permitted by the board. The board authorizes the North Boone Director of Business Services to execute a P card program agreement on his behalf.
Okay, now we need a motion and a second.
We approve the resolution authorizing issuance of the cards through the Bank of Montreal.
A second. A motion by Rudy, a second by Hazelhurst, roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution passes. That brings us to demand response energy.
Okay. I've, yeah, sorry, guys. I'm bringing this to you tonight informational-wise only, I brought this to the business meeting as well. We decided to go out for another vendor, and then that's kind of brought up some additional questions, and so I'm bringing it to you just kind of as an idea, and then we can move forward potentially next month. So demand response is a no-cost, best efforts reduction program that asks participating sites, such as schools, to reduce power during unusually high-peak times on the grid. So the program partner is PGM, which is also responsible for the revenue. That question was asked, like, who's paying for all this? It's PGM. And the two companies that I'm kind of looking at right now are NRG and Direct Energy Business. So PGM is the funding source for this initiative. They're the regional transmission organization that coordinates all the movement electricity through all of those states. So they're the ones that want, obviously, us to be able to reduce our energy at times. They also want to make sure that if there's too much energy on the grid, that they have people that they can call and say, they turn off their lights, right? Because we're drawing too much energy. So that's kind of the basis of the program, is they want to see what schools and big organizations can reduce, and if you can reduce, then you can get a rebate back, reimbursement back. So kind of the process is, they install, you know, on your, to track your energy data, and they work with you to create a plan to say, here are some ways that North Boone School District could reduce. We talked about the high school's probably our best option of reducing, just because they're newer, and they've got some more ways that we could do it. So they would alert us when they have a planned test. One of the concerns that kind of came up, and it's true, is that there's not a lot of time sometimes for them to tell us. Typically, these happen in the summer, so the kids wouldn't be in session. So we might get a call in two hours and say, hey, we want you to reduce at 1:00 p.m., and we may not have anybody here in the summer, and we just can't reduce at that time, and then, then we just don't get to rebate that time, and we miss our opportunity. Or we may have somebody in staff that can turn off all the lights and maybe, you know, kind of reduce that way. So then we would implement, if we could reduce, they would measure their reduction, and then they would put it against our baseline, and that whatever difference we had, we would receive payment for it. So the big, so we would create that plan, like I said, usually once a year, sometimes they run it in the winter or winter break, but my understanding is that they would never run a reduction unless it was an emergency during, unless it was when kids weren't in session. We can reduce full, partial, or nothing. Sometimes generators can be used, but not all are compliant, so I'm not guessing yet. I would hang our hat that our generators can be able to help us with this, it's going to have to be other ways to reduce. Some highlights of the program, there's no penalties with the program, there's no cost to enroll, we can kind of do what's comfortable to us, so we don't have to reduce, we don't have to turn the whole building down, we can maybe just do lights or something simple. We'll have a dashboard to monitor, and then we'll have that reduction plan. The difference between the two companies at this point is the percentage that they're going to give to us. So Jay up here, you know, the energy guys, they're going to give the same no matter what we reduce. It's the middle guys that are running the program. NRG said they would give us 70%, Direct Energy said they would give us 75%. So that's essentially the big difference, is what the percentage is. The other thing that I'm waiting to hear on is the equipment. So they do put a monitor on our electricity to make sure. NRG said that there's no cost, and they would pay for it. I'm waiting to hear back from Direct Energy to say, you're going to give us 75%, but are you going to charge us for the equipment on your machine? So that's one of the reasons why I'm not asking for a vote tonight, is because there's a few pieces that we still need to work out. Typically, they're five-year contracts, like I said, we get about 70, 75% of revenue, the company keeps about 25 to 30. If we can't reduce, we're still in the program, so let's say, they call, we just can't get there, we can't reduce, we're still in the program. If it happens consistently, because it is kind of a program, they may say, we have other people that want to get it, but, so that's kind of the overview of the demand response. Are there any questions, or any more information I can bring back, potentially, during the meeting?
Questions for Melissa?
We'll be bringing it back when we've got...
Did we decide who was going to be responsible for getting over there and turning stuff off, or what we could do remotely?
No, and that's one of the things that I'm hoping in the next month, we can kind of talk about, if we decide what provider is, how would this look? You know, if they call us and they're like, here, then it's not going to do us any good. And I'm assuming we're going to get about 1,500 to 4,000, depending on the provider and how much we're able to reduce, so that's kind of what I'm thinking we may get.
Is that the stock PowerPoint background? Very aesthetically pleasing. Right. That brings us to grades five through eight retention.
Yes, this was something that began last spring. We had a jump in the number of kids that were required to attend summer school. And when Jared and Allison got started this fall, we reviewed our retention policy. Or I wanted to say retention policy, it was more of our administrative procedures for retention. Our retention policy stays the exact same. This is one where we decided to redo and relook at what our administrative procedures are for retention and promotion. So Allison is here to present a little bit where we were and where we'd like to go to next. And then this helps them with communicating to parents and expectations to students as we start to get up on the season of lovely communications. So I'll turn it over to Allison.
Do you want me to go stand? I don't, for once, I don't actually have a big PowerPoint. I was just going to go over what we used to have versus what we have now. When I was in the district at the middle school, geez, 12 years ago, we had, we had this point system that we would always consider when looking at promoting a student to the next grade or retaining them. The policy right now or the administrative procedure that we have currently, it's not in this packet, but it says, any student that fails one to two classes will have to attend summer school program and complete it successfully. And then it's a very hard line. It says if a student fails three or more classes, they are automatically retained. So essentially, there's no, you fail, you fail three courses for the year and you're done. There's no, there's nothing else we're going to consider. So I took a look at, well, how, how can we look at this? Because we know that retaining children in fifth through eighth grade statistically or, you know, according to some research, it tends to set them up for failure later on in high school. So it's not that we want to find ways to get these kids on, just to move them on. We want to be able to look at more than just them failing X amount of classes. So we revamped the point system, which would be considered when we were looking at promoting or retaining a student. So the first step was looking at, do we want to set that hard line of if they fail three, it's an automatic retention? Or is there some language we can change with that? So when we look at that administrative procedure, rather than that hard line, we revamped it a little bit. And as it states in our proposal is, in order for students to be promoted to the next grade, they must pass five core courses. That's your math, English, reading, science, social studies. Got it all. If a student fails one to three courses, they must attend summer school and successfully complete or pass all those failing areas. If a student fails more than three courses, the student must attend summer school and will be considered for retention based upon the grade fifth through eighth point accumulation record. So we want to bring that back, that administrative procedure back. So we looked at, and this is something that has been an administrative procedure, we, the district has not used it most recently. So I'd like to bring that back. So Kelly, you want to put that back up? So now we're looking at students being able to basically prove to us that yes, they may have failed a class for the year, but based on other factors, they should be considered for promotion for the next grade. So we're going to look at, well, how many classes did they pass? They'd be able to earn points for their core courses as well as PE. They'd earn points for passing semester grades in their exploratory courses as well as if they're in a music class. We're going to look at their MAPS. Before this was PARC or ISAP along with MAPS. We decided to stick with MAPS because it's going to look at their conditional growth index. Are they growing? Are they learning? And their overall achievement there. So they can earn a point for each subtest, so their reading, their English, and their math. We will look at their academic performance. They receive a point if they have earned a cumulative GPA of at least 1.5. So again, they're showing that they are capable. Two points if they have earned a cumulative GPA of 2.0 or higher. We will give them credit if they successfully complete summer school. One of the programs we're looking at is actually a course recovery. Previous summer schools, students have attended as far as fifth through eighth grade, they've attended summer school, they completed some work on Study Island. We want to ramp it up. We are looking at a program that actually either the teacher is instructing or they are doing more of an online course where there's a teacher that provides a lesson. They have to watch the whole video, they can't just click through it and click buttons, and as soon as they get to the end, voila, they get credit for that. They actually have to learn and prove that they are learning the material. So it's a true course recovery. So they'd be able to earn points. Say they lose, so let's say for their core course points, if they don't pass English reading and math, they don't earn the three points up there, but they're able to earn them if they successfully complete English reading and math course recovery in summer school. So they're going to be able to earn that back. But they also must attend summer school. If they are not able to, if they miss more than three days, they won't, they won't be able to receive credit for it. Also, school attendance. If students are in good attendance, so 90% of the time, they would be able to earn a point if they participate in tutoring, and that is attendance of 80% at least. We have both the upper elementary and the middle school, we have after-school tutoring two days a week. And the middle school will be instituting a mandatory intervention study hall come semester for those students who currently are failing two or more courses for the year. So they'll, they'll have to go to a lengthy study hall with more one-on-one attention from a teacher. So we revamped this, as you see at the bottom, it says a student must accumulate 10 points in order to be assigned to the next grade level. So Mr. Peterson and I ran several students through this point system. You know, is it possible for a student who fails everything to still go on to the next grade? It's going to take some doing for them to do that. They have to basically earn, you know, they have to earn all the points in summer school, they have to earn all their points on the MAPS test, which our MAPS tests tell us, are they, are they capable of learning and producing and showing, you know, their academic achievement? You know, if, so they're going to have to show us that they're, they have to attend, be in attendance, they have to put that effort forth and be in tutoring. So there, there are steps to take. It's not completely impossible, but it's, it's, they will really have to show us, even though I failed everything, I'm going to work really hard and I can prove to you in other areas that, that I can earn these points. Let's see, anything else I want to say? So we, we felt it was important to bring this point system back into practice as well as...
Really looks at a kid multifaceted instead of just in grades and grades only. You do have some kids that can perform extremely well on the academic test, but have chosen not to do homework. So how do you look at the complete kid of what he's doing? The other thing that it does is it brings summer school back into more of a credit recovery than a time served.
Yes.
And as we get to March and we're ramping some of that stuff out, we'll talk more about what that summer school program looks like and some of the numbers we're staring at when we go to propose what we're doing with summer school.
We have, Mr. Peterson and I have already started our talks. We started it first quarter with the expectations and with, you know, talking about, well, here's the current policy in place, letting students know, letting parents know, meeting with students, meeting with parents about our high expectations. So we wanted to be able to get something from the Board saying, this for sure is what we are going to follow. This is, this is what you're expected to do.
So this, this is an administrative practice. We brought it in front of the curriculum committee. This was more one where we wanted to bring it in front of the Board and make sure that we communicated that this was a practice that we were looking, that we're implementing unless we hear severe objection from the Board. But again, it's, it's more of a multifaceted look at a student and a student's whole performance through the year.
Is the policy at the bottom of the page?
Yes.
Changed at all? Or that is the policy?
That is the policy. And, and when you read it, it says that we need to look at multiple things. So we need to look at test scores. It says PARC there, which we, we know is now IAR. It looks at completion of curriculum, their attendance, and other assessments. So this point system that we've modified or updated, that's a better term, follows our current Board policy.
Policy.
What we have to look at.
This was, as Mike just said, just informational. Does anybody have any questions or objections?
Unless there's objections from the Board, this is kind of the practice we're moving forward with both, all the way back through.
Allison, just a quick question for you. On the, the rubric for the summer school completion, where has the attendance requirement listed? Is that something that, this is the only place where that's listed as far as students who, the criteria for not receiving the credit or being dropped from enrollment? And if this is the only place where that's listed, is that something that we need to have documented in another place beyond just the point tally sheet?
This is the only place that it's, it's stated and that's in order to earn those points for summer school.
So what I did, and I have not talked to you about this too, was we got to the end of the year with some of these students that were struggling. We talked to them about where they were at points. We'd also talked to them about if you didn't successfully complete summer school, yes, we were either retaining or sometimes we would move them forward with an academic plan where we're going to do something completely different. I'll be honest with you, in my 230 years that I was principal there, I want to say I only got to like one academic plan. Because when we were sharing the point systems with kids and they're seeing how they need to struggle, at least my group, started to get their, started to get themselves to tutoring, they started trying to pick up some of those extra points because anyone was critical. But I can't speak for the kids nowadays. We'll probably get tested a few, but I do know this, we did talk about having an academic plan in place should summer school be, should summer school not go successfully. In that academic plan, it would say that if summer school's not, you know, you'll be retained or you'll move on, here's your academic plan.
I guess one of the things I wonder in this is that, without having a teaching background or knowing things, the way that I would look at this is that, I guess first of all, when you say that, you know, studies have shown retention doesn't, isn't advantageous to the children, is that based on what you have seen when we have retained them in this district and how they go? Or you're, you're saying that just based on school?
Yeah, I mean, best, yeah, I mean, best practice research really shows retention. Once you get past really the primary grades like K-1, 2, is very detrimental to students. That's why, I mean, that's one of the reasons why our state is really tracking like ninth grade on track, which they don't start tracking it till ninth grade, but that's one of the reasons why they track that as part of our state data. Because we know students who successfully complete ninth grade are four times more likely to graduate, where if you don't, you know, if you fail one or more core classes, you are four times less likely to graduate.
To drop our rates of student.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's, yeah.
Being a high school principal, I'm not a fan because high school's the first place where if a student fails, that you don't earn credit. And then all of a sudden, it looks like, oh, well, why is that happening at the high school? However, I, I do know all the research does support, all the research supports that to hold them back is actually more detrimental.
So I always liked playing devil's advocate in things and again, not having the educational background. If I were to look at this and say, say I'm not even looking at the student that you're holding back, but I'm looking at that I can not do two classes, do a whole year's worth of work and not do it, lose those two credits and then attend however many days of summer school and pick those back up, to me, I don't know what I'm doing for that student to prepare them for high school. But more importantly, I don't know what I'm doing for the other kids that look at that as an example to say, it's this easy to get through eighth grade. And to me, again, just kind of looking through this, I'm not sure I understand the, having a person repeat eighth grade is any worse than sending them into high school struggling to maybe get classes done or to hit things. Is that you're just, you're, it seems like a social promotion no matter how you do it. And I would get it if you told me, well, but we tried it here. I could tell you, we retained three children and, and this is what happened to them and the six that we didn't do it to, we had six high school graduates over here that we had no issues. But I, it seems to me like we're sending all of the wrong signals for a non educator. We're sending it to that child and we're sending it to the people that, that look at that child. And that's, it just doesn't make sense. And you're making it harder on the bill, on, on your high school principal's side. It doesn't make sense to me.
So if I could clarify a few things, because, you know, I understand where you're coming from. So what we're trying to look at is the whole child. Because some students fail because they choose not to do homework. So when we look at their test scores and when we have them attend summer school and take the course material or similar course materials, so your standardized material for that grade level, they are proving to us, yes, that they can learn the material or they know the material. We're asking them to prove that to us. So we can with more confidence say, you can go on to the high school.
And hopefully at that point, do your homework.
Right.
Because they're not going to pass high school unless they do their homework as well.
So tell them the other thing that I would say is the kid that you're probably talking about, there's still a way for them to fail through here. The kid that chooses to do absolutely nothing.
We, we have students who...
I mean, we do.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at a handful now. I've been tracking the data. We have students that are failing everything and that's why I'm having the conversations with them and letting them know, you are going to be held accountable. You're not going to attend magic summer school for three weeks or four weeks or whatever it was before and magically go on to the next grade. That is the message that Jared, Mr. Peterson and I are sending to the fifth through eighth grade kids, that, you know, you cannot continue to fail and I'll send them, send you on to the next grade. Then they get to Jake at the high school and, oh, what do you mean? I, I, I have to be a freshman again, you know, because of my credits? We're, this actually is putting into place more rigor for these kids, more expectation for the kids.
There, there is one more key, I, I think, and this actually came up earlier in the board meeting when we talked about SEL. This is the reason behind social emotional learning. And to hopefully look into that, to incorporate a social emotional learning earlier on in the kids, especially around that turn, you know, those middle school years, you know, once they, once they hit fifth grade, sixth grade and there and they kind of make that turn where, you know, some kids, you know, say, I don't care anymore and I'm just going to do this. You know, that's the big push for the social emotional learning that's coming along is to hopefully pick up those kids at that point to, to get them, you know, so that they are trying harder throughout. You know, that's the big push for the social emotional learning that's coming along is to hopefully pick up those kids at that point to, to get them, you know, so that they are trying harder throughout. So I, I mean, I realize we're putting the point system in before that, you know, the SEL on things, but that's part of the reason why the SEL has come on. And I say SEL, social emotional learning, part of the reason and the research behind the SEL as well.
Allison, kind of a blunt question. Will we be practicing retention?
If they don't meet the requirements, I will consider retaining a student. If I have a student that fails everything in seventh grade and now he's failing everything in eighth grade, how can I in good conscience send them to the high school? If they show me in their maps that they are below where they should be, how can I send them to the high school if they are going to continue to not do anything? To basically breathe the air? That's, that's not fair. I take this very seriously and I've had very serious conversations with parents and with students. You know, that's, it's not fair to my peers. It's not fair to, it's not fair to the child to continue to pass them along without them putting in, in the work and effort. And I do see, looking at the information, at least my students, specifically the eighth graders, if they failed all last year, I've looked at their map scores and how they're scoring in maps now. They're struggling because they went for how, for how long not having to do anything. And now they're with, you know, in eighth grade, you know, on the door, knocking on the door of high school where things are going to be a lot tougher. They're going to be more independent. You know, I still, we still have them here in the middle school where they're, they're in study halls with the same teacher that they have class with. And, um, it's, it's my responsibility. I will take that to really hit it home with these kids that you're going to have to prove this, that you deserve to go on to high school. It's not going to be a fun conversation, but I've started them already.
So how would that be identified when you suggested this was?
I saw no opportunity for kids who were actually academically ready to go to high school to prove that they were. Because we had that, that procedure of if you fail three or more classes, you're automatically retained. And if I am to follow the procedures that are set before me by the board, I'm going to be retaining 25 kids or more. If it, if this, if the year ended today, I would retain 25 kids from the middle school. And those are my general education kids. That's not including my special ed students who are struggling. And that's, that's tough. So what can I do as a principal to encourage them to do better? I'm going to bring back a system where they can see, oh, I actually can prove that I can do this. Putting into place those mandatory tutoring during the day. It doesn't require them to stay after school. Giving them opportunities to stay after school if that's an option for them. Giving them a summer school that actually is going to teach them the material that is based on state standards and hold them accountable to that. They're not just going to quit the buck until it gives them such a chance. They're going to prove to me, prove to their teachers, you guys, that's the board, that they should be.
The teachers on both sides of this equation, the middle school, the teachers on high school, teachers on the other side.
It was approved by the curriculum committee. Yeah, we brought it, I mean, two meetings ago was the first time Allison and Jared brought it and they made some revisions and brought it back for approval in our last meeting. So it was approved by, and there were, um, there's teachers on that.
Yeah, this was enthusiastically endorsed by the committee.
Allison, I understand you do not want to hear to be forced to make that decision. But in the past, was that enforced if they had missed three?
Usually what they did was, um, and I'll admit, I never asked, but I was told that we passed summer school, so we moved on. But I didn't check the level. But last year, we really had the spike in the numbers. The years before, previously we were at like a dozen. And then last year, all of a sudden, the numbers really went sky high.
Fifty-three students.
Fifty-three, something like that. And I, I remember the board sitting here saying, what, what happened this year? And we, at the moment Allison and Jared got it, we just said, we need to just take a look at that and get on.
That was fifty-three who had failed the class, right? Not fifty.
Anywhere from one to multiples, you know.
Um, I, I could go back and, I know the roster of summer school. I worked with the elementary side of summer school last year. So if you want the answer to that question, you know, what, what were they actually failing, how many courses? You know, what, what qualified them for summer school? I could give you those numbers if you want.
No. I was just curious that this hasn't really come before us. But I understand your desire to be part of the policy.
Yes.
Any other questions for Allison?
No.
Just information. All right, yep. That brings us to bus purchases.
New course proposals.
New course proposal.
All right, yeah, my line is.
Yeah, so, um, included in your packet was a redlined version of the changes to our curriculum guide. My apologies today that the cover sheet did not get in there. There was a slight mix up and didn't upload right. In it are three new proposals, which are, we're looking for the approval. Jake and Carrie are here to talk with both of you, or with, with the whole committee about it. It was something that was brought forward and shared with the curriculum committee. And they, for an informational piece, they kind of talked about revamping the form so it's a little more complete and kind of maybe it's a little more updated with what we're asking for and want done on it. So Carrie and Jake, I'll let you guys start from there.
So I'll speak first in terms of the form. Um, and then we can talk about the, you know, the, the new course proposals that you'll see in the updated curriculum guide or the new courses you'll see. So, um, we, earlier, you know, this year at our curriculum and instruction committee meeting, the high school brought forward three new courses. And in that discussion was maybe, you know, some ideas to revamp the course proposal form, uh, form that we use. And so this is the revised version based on, you know, Jake and I did a little bit of work together behind the scenes. We brought it to the curriculum and instruction committee last month or earlier this month, whatever, the last meeting. And, um, this is then, you know, the changes that have been made. What, I'll just kind of highlight some of those. One is the title. Instead of high school course proposal, we have it say course proposal because we had talked about that there might be times that the middle school would want to bring a course forward or something like that. So then everyone uses the same form. At the beginning, we took out some things that were redundant. But what you'll see in some of the, the kind of bigger changes is on page two, under number two. So number two and number three. So instead of asking like, what are the objectives of the course, which can be very broad? Um, we ask, we're asking teachers to identify from their state standards, um, you know, five or six standards that would really be the focus of their curriculum. Those are called priority standards. We do that with all of our courses and our curriculum work. So this is a great place for them to just kind of begin that. Um, so we're going to ask the teachers to do that. And then we're going to ask them in number three to list the main topics that will be taught. Because that was, that's a great place for then us to see, how does this course differ? Like if it's a social studies elective, maybe some of the priority standards are going to be similar to some other social studies courses. However, the topics would be different. So then we'd be able to see that there. Um, so those are two of the, you know, kind of larger changes that we made. And then I did add, and actually I added this after the curriculum committee meeting, but I just added on the very last page, signature lines, because we didn't have that before. But of course, the building principal needs to sign it. I would need to sign it and superintendent would need to sign it, or at least have seen it all before it goes to the curriculum and instruction committee. So that way it's all, you know, it's been vetted and we've been able to look at it and make sure that we don't have any questions. Because then we could ask things to be changed even before it comes to the curriculum and instruction committee, just if there's something that's unclear. So I added that. So, um, this would be then the new form that we will use going forward, moving into next year for any new high school courses or maybe even middle school, middle school courses that, that could be proposed.
And that piece is more informational for the board.
Right.
Just so they kind of know what was going on. And then the actual curriculum guide.
To tie to that then is the three new courses. Oh, go ahead.
I'll make one note before we do that, because we also discussed at the last meeting, helping teachers with this process and creating maybe some models for what the proposal would look like and offering some consistency as we see proposals go forward.
And I can create a model. I mean, I can use one that we had this year and just tweak a few things. And that way we have, you know, a good model for teachers to, to use. And then, and then of course, as things, you know, go forward, I think that's where the signatures are important because they should be collaborating with Jake and in talking about what those things are. And, and then of course, if they need my support as well, you know, that's, I can definitely collaborate. And so the three new courses that were proposed, um, that you will see then in the course guide, along with some other changes that Jake will speak to a little bit more. But we had three new courses that were proposed. Um, one of them is Intro to Engineering, which you'll see in the science section. I don't, hell, I don't know if you, you don't, I don't know if you have to find them all, but I'm just going to throw it. But I mean, if people are looking, one is Intro to Engineering, which is in the science section. One is Transitional Math, which is in the math section. And then the other is Honors English or Honors Spanish two, which is in the foreign language section. The two, you know, Spanish and Intro to Engineering are really based on student interest and are electives that students can take. The Transitional Math course is a new course that is coming from the state and that we are required to have in place by 2021. Um, but we're trying to get it in here early. Uh, but it helps our students who might be struggling in math to take a fourth year. They take a fourth year of math that would, that will, that will then allow them to go to RVC and be in a credit bearing math course, so they do not have to take remedial math. So that's coming from the state.
And this is a, this has very specific guidelines as to what students meet this requirement.
Yeah.
Um, there are students who did not meet and exceed in the SAT. And there are a couple other little requirements in there in accordance to the state.
Yeah.
So, um, and this is really meant for students who aren't quite meeting the standards, the college standards, to take a course. So then when they, you know, when they complete this course with a passing grade, they are able to, uh, you know, as was stated, enter right into a credit bearing math course. And, and it is specifically tied to RVC. I think we had partnered specifically with.
Yes, we're partnering with RVC. So then that way students can go right into a credit bearing math course at RVC, which is great for our students who might be, you know, struggling in math. This would not be for our students who are advanced in math. We want them to take more advanced courses.
What was the mechanism for students to be recommended for this course?
So there's, there's, um, and I have to pull up the PowerPoint again, but there's quite a few, um, components. But some of it has to do with their test scores. Like if they do not meet a certain benchmark for math from SAT or PSAT, because we have to look at PSAT. Looking at their grades, um, looking at what courses they've already taken. And there's a couple other ones.
They had to have passed Algebra II. They didn't meet or exceed in math. And actually, so here's, here's the hard thing. The state specifically actually said it is based off of SAT, their junior year, which we don't get back until the middle of the summer.
It's hard, it's hard to schedule kids into a class.
But one of the things we're trying to do that I've talked with our counselors about is taking the PSAT ten and start trying to use that as an indicator for how, you know, trying to use that maybe as an indicator to, to give us an idea that these are the students who are probably going to need to go into this class. Students don't have to take it, you know, if this, if the student said, hey, I'm going into trades and I don't plan on going to Rock Valley College. Guess what? I don't, I don't want to take this even though I didn't meet and exceed. I mean, the student does not have to take it. They're still required by the state to only pass three high school math credits.
And they have to have completed their three required credits for graduation before taking this course. This course cannot be a, a course for their math requirements for graduation. It has to be an additional fourth year course.
And it, oh, it's an entire year also. Correct.
Some districts are building it as a semester, but they are finding it difficult to complete all the requirements in a semester. So districts have a choice on doing that. We decided that we thought a year.
Can, would you, what's the minimum if the high school really doesn't have a minimum for a class to make, correct?
We do run, we roughly run fifteens.
For, yeah, for a lot of the, uh, A, for the AP and foreign languages, we're, we're sitting, you know, we said the minimum is around fifteen for the rest of the classes. We've gone base off money.
Would you imagine every year you'll have fifteen students? Because. I don't understand why I'm hesitant to ask this. I'm wondering, do we know, have we analyzed why a student might complete three years of required math at North Boone, including Algebra II, but then need to be in remedial math?
It's not remedial math. And I think we have to be careful with that. And that's one thing the state has said is this is not remedial math. It's transitional math. So it's not re-teaching them things. What it does is it keeps them from having to take remedial math when they get to college.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So it's not remedial math in high school. It's preparing them for that credit bearing course. So it's keeping them from having to take that remedial course in college. If it, well, and what we're finding is we have many students, and this is across the state, and this is why the state has done this. There are many students who take those three years for, for graduation requirement and do not take a fourth year of math. Um, and so then they go to try to go to school and they haven't had math for a year and they have to take remedial math because they haven't had math for a year.
And take that, you play, sir, you know, you could lose it.
Right, and that, that's the.
And so this is to help that from happening for some of those students. It's, that's why it's called transitional math. It's not a remedial course because it's not, um, it's, it's things to help make sure that they are ready for college. It's not re-teaching things that they should have already learned. And so, and we're still partnering, working with Rock Valley and what this will look like. But, um, but there's, some districts are already running this course, you know, with partnership with Rock Valley. So Rock, and what, the nice thing is Rock Valley has a course that we can take, basically they'll, you know, we can kind of just adopt their course. That would be a remedial course if they went to Rock Valley. That then we can use a lot of the curriculum and, and things that, and that's what other districts are doing.
Would there be any wisdom to, if that's an issue, urging students not to take math their freshman, sophomore, junior year, but their sophomore, junior and senior year?
They have to pass these, they, they have to have taken their three math credits.
Before they can take one.
Which is a requirement put out by the state.
Right. And what the, what's, what colleges are really finding is students who don't take a fourth year of math tend to struggle. So the state doesn't require four years of math.
But they're seeing a high percentage.
But they're seeing a high percentage of students that don't take that fourth year are struggling.
Okay.
But do they just affect, just don't they just effectively do that for us? If you have to take three years and then take this, aren't you effectively saying that kids gotta take four years of math before they go to college?
They don't have to, a student doesn't have to choose to take this. What this is doing is giving students an opportunity to take a course that will help them stay on track to be prepared for college. But they don't, they don't have, we're not requiring them to take a fourth year of math. But we're being required to offer it. We're required to offer the course, to build the course and offer the course.
I, Ed, I, I agree with you.
I know what you're saying.
I agree with you with what you're saying on things. I think this is actually to entice, you're going to have to earn, you know, you have your electives that you take when you go into college. Everybody has to pass one math course. It has to be a credit bearing math course. So let, we'll say I'm, I'm a student who's not mathematically inclined and would want to take that my senior year, but it really is going to help me out to take this class so that I can take that one credit bearing course and, you know, math course in college because it's a requirement as an elective. Pass it, be done with it, move on. It just seems to me, yeah, that the state would hand this down and not just turn around and say, we need you to have four years of math. And just be done with it. I mean, if the kids are struggling. I went through that with my, we made that mistake with other, we didn't make that mistake the other two. You're going to take four years of math. You know, that's, that's, it's just, I, I get it. I just, this doesn't make any sense to me.
Sure.
This is like teachings that almost come in the name right here.
As a parent of a child who did not get her mother's mathematical ability, having her take a fourth year, which would have been pre-calculus, would have been inviting her to probably get very low grade. You know, her grades were up, As, Bs. If I made her take pre-calculus, she would risk doing very poorly. But we did, she did take another, actually honors, Algebra II class. And so she made. But we did, she did take another, actually, honors, Algebra II class, and so she maintained her math, but if this was an option for her, it would have kept her in the mindset of math, and then when she took her first math class at Rock Valley, I think she would have been a lot more successful, because she would have maintained information.
If she was an AB student, would she have qualified for this class? She wouldn't have, I understand what you guys told us.
It, it would have been, as long as she passed the three math credits she already needed, but let's say she didn't meet or exceed on, on math.
On the state test.
On the state test, then she would have qualified for it.
Is that actual qualification for taking the course, or any student who wants a fourth year could take the course?
Technically, no, and that's what we're, I mean, we're still learning some of that with working with Rock Valley, but technically, no, it's not open to any student, it's really, it's, it's, it's students who, it's really designed for students who are, it's not struggling, but are, that are not ready for an advanced math course their, their senior year, that would need, but would need to keep, want to keep taking those, that fourth year of math.
It's, yeah.
The math problem.
Yeah.
Me too.
It's tricky, I mean, it's a, yeah, it's.
That's, and that's, this is a state requirement, I.
Is that mandate, is that forged by the state that they have to be, be lacking or needing that instruction?
Yeah, there's always.
So we couldn't prioritize those students and still leave, leave it open for other students, so we have opportunities for.
I'm not sure, we'll have to look into that. We'll work with Rock Valley to see if that's, you know, how we identify those students. I'm not sure, I mean, I think we start with those students and then, I'm not sure if there's open, you know, if the window's open for others or not.
I'd be surprised to see the numbers over the years, of students who will say, yeah, I wanna take a fourth math class. I'm not good at math, but I wanna take a fourth math class, who don't have, Allison's a parent saying, you're taking the fourth math class.
I think that was part of the issue, wasn't it, because it's hard, high numbers that would not.
The, the big talk we have to give when we talk, you know, with the seniors, when we talk about this course is, listen, this is your opportunity so that when you go into college, you know, so that when you go into college, you can go right into a credit bearing and and hopefully move forward on things. You know, and and that, that'll be the big promotion there behind it, but, I mean, you're right, you're right, why don't you just say you have to take a fourth year anyway? You know, you are gonna have students, some students though, that aren't gonna go to college and say, I don't wanna take a fourth year anyway.
Well, and it, it is designed as well to not only help students who are going into that, to that, to college, but that idea of those career pathways, and so, that was one of the reasons why the state also did this, is not only to help students in college, but also in careers, and especially careers that are high in math, where they might go into a trade, but that math is important, and so it's also, you know, it's encouraged for those students as well.
Carrie, actually, to that point, in the committee meeting when we discussed this, my memory serves, this is the more generic transitional course.
Yes.
But there were two more somewhat specialized options, and do you know any districts that are teaching more than one of these options, or have you guys talked at all about if this is well received, or how this fits with our curriculum, whether those other two math courses might show up?
To answer your first question, I do not know any other districts that are offering either of the other two courses. This one is the one that's kind of in, there were three different courses you could choose from, this is number two out of the three, and so, and it allows students to go into credit bearing, like general mathematics at RVC, or, you know, mathematics dealing with trades, you know, or career, certain career pathways, if they would go to RVC, so it's really, it's helping them go into two different areas at RVC. Um, so, but to answer your question, I don't know anyone else that's offering any of the others, and we have not had conversations around the other two courses yet. I think one of the reasons most of the surrounding districts are starting with this one is because RVC already has a course that we can basically just take and teach, which makes it a little bit easier. The other ones, they don't, and so you'd have to build a course from scratch, which is more challenging.
Is this Rock Valley's O nine eight?
I, I can't speak to the number, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
It's the class you take if you didn't pass the math placement test.
Probably.
Okay.
And, and the other thing that ties, I mean, the, the good thing about partnering up, I, you know, when you talk about colleges, I, I think it's somewhat specific to, I, I don't know that they could necessarily take this and go to a different college, they would still have to take an Accuplacer, a different college, but at RVC, it would be passing grade that allows you right into the credit bearing course.
Well, and part of this with the state is also there's a state portability panel, and so, so we have the state panel, and then we have local advisory panels, which is through RVC, and I've been to one of those meetings so far with, around this topic, and all the surrounding districts, you know, are invited to go. And so what, what that local advisory panel does is they write a plan and they propose, they, they send a proposal to the state for portability that would grant us portability to other colleges as well. So our students right now would be able to go to RVC and take a credit bearing course, but they wouldn't be able to go to Highland or McHenry County, or, you know, some, or even NIU, and take a credit bearing course. They would have to take a test still to see if they could qualify, they might, we would want them to qualify, but there's no guarantees. What we do is apply for portability, so, and if you get approved by the state for portability, then yes, you actually can go to other schools. At this time, the, our, we have not been approved for portability through RVC, and that hasn't happened yet, but I know the local advisory panel is working on it.
Any further questions?
Can I have a motion to approve the new course proposal and curriculum guide?
Do you want the other two, or do you want?
Well, there was, yeah, I mean, there was Transitional Math, there was, and Interne, I mean, I don't know if we need to go over each course, Intro to Engineering and then Honors Spanish Two, and then there's other changes to the curriculum guide that, you know, Jake and his team made that, I don't know if anyone has questions around those.
The, the other two, I know one was in science, and that was the engineering.
Engineering.
Next gen science standards are, you know, require engineering now in, into the curriculum. Last year, we started off, started up an engineering club with cut one funds, we actually had a really good turnout, as far as participation of students, we were regularly having ten students, and and that actually, we had more than, than twenty different students represented through, through engineering, the engineering club. This was something that a lot of students then came back and and were pretty happy with some of the exposure to some of the engineering concepts. So Mr. Shank ended up taking a poll with his courses alone, and with his, with his courses alone, he had over fifty different students who were interested in Intro to Engineering. Now, right now, a number of years ago, we put together a committee, Joe was on that committee, and one of the things we talked about is, we don't have enough students to sustain an entire three or four courses in, in engineering in itself, because it would require twenty to thirty students every year who would be interested in, in, in that. Our students are able to take engineering at Hanamiga, Hanamiga has Project Lead the Way. They, they teach, they, they teach the lowest Project Lead the Way class there, for, for which you can actually turn around and take a test for to earn college credit. So the focus for this is a lot of our, our students up to this point in time in high school haven't been exposed to any type of engineering concepts whatsoever, so we wanted to go below the, the, the lowest Project Lead the Way to start to expose our students to engineering concepts, you know, with the idea that, you know, I, I know it says grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, but, you know, our hopes are that we're able to hit kids at this lower level, you know, in, to introduce them to the basic engineering concepts, so if they wanted to, they would have the opportunity to take some of these Project Lead the Way courses over at Hanamiga. And, you know, who knows eventually what, what it could possibly lead to, but at this point in time, I know we had an interest in, in the intro class, and and they do have an opportunity to take, you know, continue on with engineering classes after that basic class, that, the intro class. And it hits on a number of the next gen science standards, you know, engineering concepts, you know, that we're supposed to be exposing our students to. And, and the two courses, and I had this written down on a different piece of paper, so I apologize, there's a specific course by, there's a specific guide by Illinois that's out there that's free that Chris Shank worked off of to come up with the, with, with the curriculum of the course, and that curriculum is free. And I apologize, I did not bring that with me. And then we would pair that up with Local Robo to come up with an introductory course into the process, possible Project Lead the Way that's offered in Hanamiga.
So before we jump ahead of over, and this, is this where we're going?
With the electives.
Are we, are we getting ready to have to take a vote on, on this document?
Yes.
Okay. So, are all these, are these extra classes all gonna be overloads for the teachers that are trying to be teaching them?
So here's, you know, the way this is always, so the way this goes, every spring, the students choose their courses, and, you know, based off the numbers, then, ba, based off the numbers, you know, we end up allocating the classes as long as we have enough students to run the course on, you know, through this. So like this year, we have, we actually got, we actually reduced by one FTE at, at the high school this past year, and we do have a Spanish teacher who's on a, an overload. So, you know, is there a possibility of being an overload? Yes, there is a possibility of there being an overload. One of the things with the pathways that we're trying to do is we're trying to expose our students to more career pathways, you know, different career pathways, that, you know, because of the Every Student Succeeds Act and developing some of these career pathways and opportunities. So is there a possibility? Yes, there is a possibility, until I get the student numbers up, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you right now.
So whenever I see this come up on our board agenda, I always get all excited, because I'm thinking somebody sat down and had a conversation, and they've identified gaps that are missing in our curriculum, and, but I'm not hitting, and so we're gonna come up with coursework that's gonna fill those gaps, and the following year, we're gonna be able to come back, or be saying, yeah, that, that class knocked it out of park, and, and back to my days here as administrator, whenever they had those discussions, K four principals were fighting with the middle school principals and the high school principals about who got staff and who vanished classes, and I always envisioned those robust conversations taking place in the background, I'm guessing this isn't what this is.
Well, as I stated just a minute, as I just stated a minute ago, though, this apes is next gen science standards if we're required to teach.
So, Ed, there's a shift now, too, so now you, you, you've got this curriculum guide, kids start putting down what their preferences are, so each year, though, you'll have some shifts where kids are choosing this, not this. We want to, and that's coming up here in January, we wanna talk about how do our electives feed from middle school to high school, back into the career pathways, back into the next gen science standards and all that. And then, when Jake talks about it a little bit, you're gonna have electives that fill, and then you'll have some where the interest levels drop way off, so you're not filling those. So there are times where we shift, maybe who we're recommending for, you know, next year, what coursework we're not gonna offer at all. This goes back to the fifteen sizes, too.
So that Intro to AP class, at least, that we heard presentation from it at Chinchikali that's not on the radar for the next year?
No, not yet, no, but it's, it's, that's a piece we're discussing.
There, there's some talk about, there's, not only is there Intro to AP, but there's also, you know, some standards that have been put out there towards the beginning of this school year, you know, that we could incorporate in some of our other courses, since we're working on priority standards right now, that's taking precedence on things, but it is something that, you know, we would like to see worked into some of the curriculum, you know, to prepare our students to be able to take those AP courses.
So then, I guess the other question, as I kinda beat Kelly up on this, and then I realized that here really wasn't hers to answer, but, as I was looking through this, I ought not just focus on the agriculture part. You've got the whole table of courses, you know, X out here, and then back on the other pages, you have prerequisites for ag sciences being Intro to Ag, but it's Xed out on a front page.
Well, Intro to Ag itself isn't Xed out, if you look at that, so here's, here's what we did, some of the, we, we've had some discussion with some parents about these tables and and how they're laid out, and they're, you know, seem fairly linear. When you ask what courses you can take and can't take, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, you only, if you, if you look through the whole thing, Ed, the, all, all of those tables have actually been crossed out, and we're trying to figure out a way of coming up with a diagram that isn't so confusing, that makes it show that you have options, you know, once you pass this course, that you could go here or here. There's some crazy lines all over the place, so we've tried some bubble diagrams, we've tried some other stuff. The, the biggest thing is that there is some confusion through that process, and we would like to come up with a better visual, just to, you know, to give you a heads up on that. So, but, yeah, all of them, you know, all of them, so like when people look at English, for instance, and you, now granted, there's some formatting that ends up coming out here, but people think, okay, so if I start off in Honors English nine, I go to Honors English ten, I go to Honors English eleven, I go to AP Latin Composition, you know, they don't realize, hey, I can move, you know, I can move in here. So that was one of the things behind taking out some of those tables, and we're trying to come up with a better visual for that.
So, okay, so we Xed out the tables, but every, I, I read all forty-eight pages of this, this is one of the hardest things I've ever read, to try and follow up, I can't, I, I have to believe the parents would find this very difficult to navigate through, but every prerequisite for every class on the second page says Intro to Agriculture Industry or Approval of instructors, but nowhere in the next two pages is Introduction to Agricultural Industry, a class that's offered.
Yeah, you know what, though, so, the, I think the point that you're making is, we probably should take out that industry on there, because it's just Intro to Agriculture.
It's before the chart, Ed, the Intro to Ag course is actually before the chart, I think that's also formatting there.
So all the classes aren't listed here on this document, then?
It's Intro to Ag is right there.
I get the second pathway piece, but it lists all the basics, science and business and sales and marketing, business management are all listed on the second and third pages.
I, yeah, so, so.
They're just taking the charts out.
That.
The class is still there.
Introduction to Agricultural Industry, we need to take out that word industry, because it's this Intro to Agriculture.
But in some locations, it still says, like on the top of this page, Intro to Agricultural Industry.
Correct.
So do you just have to remove the industry all over the place?
So that's, that's one of the things that we need to do, is we need to remove that industry from all over the place.
So I guess that's wrong, Ed, I guess I didn't. We're not gonna hold on approving this, are we gonna?
Yes, we are, that was not caught, so obviously, industry's gotta be redlined out. We gave you the redline version with what we thought was the final thing, so obviously something's been found.
So we can just approve this and trust that you guys are gonna do it directly?
That's your choice.
Or we can approve it with, with those changes?
You could, you could, you could not, we bring it back in January, cleaned up.
That's, of course, you definitely would. What do you need, do you need this approved tonight, so you can get going on it, or?
So students will start picking classes at the beginning of January.
Nine oh, was it last year or a year and a half ago, we, I think it was last year, we walked through the entire document, we tried to reformat, re-edit, to make sure we cleaned everything up. I don't know how industry got missed, but I.
Well, and, and one of the things I know Tracy said to me is, we are going to, she said, please don't make any edits to it yourself, she said that to me, she said, whatever you do, just let me make all the edits this year, because I will say, admittedly, between
Thank you.
A couple different people making edits to it.
Cuts, copies, copies and takes.
And that's where I think a lot, a lot of mistakes were made, so, we, I haven't made anything to this this year, Tracy can, can vouch for me, she probably. Tracy can, can vouch for me, she'd probably give you a swift kick in the hind end if I did. But, um, yeah, so we need to take that industry out of there.
Can we, can we approve something?
Contingent on?
Contingent with an editorial pass, where we do that open-ended if it's substantively unchanged, so structurally if it's the same, but obviously typos and discrepancies in naming, like that needs to be changed.
I'm not trying to, I really am. I mean, if, if, if this needs to go through with, with somebody, I just thought maybe I was missing something.
No, I, and we can, quite honestly, we can take care of that tomorrow and, and send it right back out to you, so if we can do it with contingencies.
Yeah, but if you've, if you've got students who need to look at this as a document to begin to register for classes at the beginning of January, I think the board needs to approve something so you have the curriculum guide.
Cor- correct, if we can approve it with contingencies of taking that industry, the word industry out of those.
But I don't, I, what I wanted leave you leeway is to take the time to edit, consolidate your edits, as long as there's no substantive change to the structure of the document so that you can go beyond the one course title.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that call. Jake, was there anything else to present?
The, the only other course, uh, that was brought up was, uh, the Spanish two, uh, the Honors Spanish two, adding a, uh, an honors level. Here's, here's what I'll tell you, the big, uh, push behind that, and I talked to Mr. Geiger about this, and I said, you know, right now, he's teaching honors, our honors four and our, and our regular, uh, our, our honors Spanish four and our regular Spanish four, and our honors Spanish three and our regular Spanish three, those classes are together, and he's differentiating within, in the class. So I told him, I said, you know, one of the big things that I'm going to let you know is there's going to probably require differentiation within the class itself because, you know, we don't have enough students to sustain a complete honors track otherwise. And he said, I'm completely on board with that. One of the things he's noticing is a lot of students will end up taking two years of Spanish to get two years of Spanish for the honors diploma. But then we have some students who, who want to go on, you know, and are at a much higher level on, you know, through the process. And so that was the major thought behind adding an honors Spanish two, and then those students, you know, are, are typically your students who are moving on anyway. So, um, that was the purpose behind that, but that was the third and final class.
No Spanish industry, right?
No.
All right. Any other questions or clarifications needed? Now can I, where is it? Can I have a motion to approve the new course proposals and curriculum guide? With, um, with a caveat for editing. Motion and a second.
So moving, okay.
Like you said. Second.
Uh, motion by Hazelworth and a second by Rudy, roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Heverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to bus purchases.
Yes, Melissa's here, she's got some quotes back, some information. Um, we did talk about this at our last, uh, business meeting, and Melissa's got some follows up, and this is a continuation of our discussion cycles for replenishing our bus fleet.
So, um, we kind of created last year, uh, a plan of how we're going to replenish our buses. And so we were kind of in, last year and this year, we were in a ten-year cycle of purchasing ten buses. Uh, last year, we purchased ten. This year, our current fleet, we have twenty-nine buses, nineteen in daily rotation. Um, we talked about at the business meeting as well, we have quite a few buses sitting at our lot that we're not driving, um, which brings up some conversation on, we have an opportunity here to possibly trade in some buses and not purchase new buses. So kind of our long-term plan was to purchase ten buses a year for three years, and then move into a rotation of buying, of buying five or six buses after that. Uh, like I said, with our newer buses and fewer routes, uh, we have a less of a need. We've kind of shifted some routes together and all that kind of stuff. So this year, our framework was to, um, purchase international buses when possible, air breaks when available, seventy-seven passenger with the exception of our wheelchair buses, um, and then to purchase our buses. In the past, we looked at leasing, and we thought that was not, uh, something that we were, would benefit the district at this time. So this year, um, trade in ten buses, um, we would purchase five special needs wheelchair buses, we purchased two buses with undercarriages at seventy-seven passenger, um, two buses, just normal seventy-seven passenger buses, and then potentially one white bus. We've not gotten any kind of, uh, quotes on the white bus yet, but it's still kind of in conversation on whether we need that or not. Um, like Tom had said earlier, our budget this year for that was about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, which was about what it cost us last year. Um, the next few slides kind of walk through the trade-in of the buses on the left, and then with our replacement on the right. And essentially what we're doing is we're going to be purchasing two, um, seventy-seven passenger, like I said. Most of our buses are, are, our trade-in values are coming in much higher than they had in the past because our mileage is less, the buses are a little bit newer, and so we're getting a little bit more money back. Uh, we are getting two pass, or two luggage buses, um, and then I also listed the state reimbursement under each one for those. Uh, we did get some, um, wheelchair buses in there too, so we're essentially whatever we're getting rid of or replacing. The one thing we did talk about is that we're going to trade, um, ten buses in, but we're only going to purchase nine buses, um, this year, so we have one less out of the lot. Um, we did talk about, in the meeting as well, about, um, so here's kind of the overview. We have nine used buses that we're looking to purchase at about six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Uh, the trade-in came in around sixty-five thousand, um, so our total amount for those nine buses would be about five hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars for the total purchase. And this kind of runs through what our state estimated. Um, essentially, whatever is purchased one year, it's about a year to get that reimbursement back because you have to file it and then that, that claim comes in. So, um, last year's money is coming in this year. Um, so we kind of take that off of there too. So, and here's our upcoming years. We are looking to trade in next year and not purchase two buses, and so we talked about in the business committee, why not trade those in this year? And I got quotes on those two buses, and they were quoted about twelve thousand to trade them in this year. Um, when I was talking with transportation, my recommendation is maybe to wait until next year, only because I'm not sure what our sports, our spring sports schedule gets kind of crazy with the number of extra routes we're running in the evenings, trying to get people where they need to be, and so maybe holding on to, um, that fleet this spring to see what happens and what, how many are actually sitting on the lot, and then we can make a decision for next year if that's really what we need to do. I checked in with some other districts, and they said they run about ten to fifteen percent, um, extra buses, so that would be two to three extra buses for us. Uh, that seems kind of low with our sports schedule, but I, I'm not, I just want to wait and see where, where, where we're going with that. Um, so I, your quotes were in your packet, um, like I said, the, the total with those trade-ins would be, um, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, um, for those kind of mixed mess of buses there. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Melissa? Ed, would you like to add anything from? Oh, was this discussed at facilities?
Uh, business.
This was business services, I'm sorry. Tom, that would be you. Is there anything that you'd like to add? We have a recommended motion. Moved to approve as presented.
Second.
Uh, the, the motion by Mulholland, second, by Maxi. Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Heverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to the audit.
I just can't believe you guys have extra buses sitting out there every day.
And I, I went out there, this was the day after me, and I drove through and counted, and there was a ton of buses sitting there, but then when I was talking to Patty and Scott about in transportation, like, and, and she said, well, what about the sports, and what about the field trips, and some of that stuff, and I was like, okay, so that, they said, but we've condensed routes of these stacked preschool, and we have less drivers, and so it, it's, it's definitely changed, and I'd hate to buy a two thousand and nineteen bus and let it sit. Then, that's not, that's not a good use of anything, so, but we have to have some kind of spare, so just trying to, it's changed, it's definitely.
I remember everything that we had, had to run, kind of retract, or double up stuff that was on, in the room.
Yeah, and I, I'm thankful for you guys allowing some of this rotation because my first couple of months here, we were in that situation where we couldn't drive some buses, we were breaking down.
We were scrambled.
It was scramble time, so we're in just a much better spot, and like I said, our maintenance costs, I think after we get some of our specialized buses out, we'll get new ones in, those costs are going to go down too, and we're just going to start seeing more savings.
So we talked about, a little bit about the impact that we have taken of putting the kids on buses at K4 and the impact that it had on, for our kids at school. Did we get any feedback on that yet?
Um, I have not. Did you notice in your parking lot, like, how was your?
Well, I, I don't know what it looked like before, but it works out pretty great right now, and I know that, um, the kids on that first row, eighty-two, that come in the morning, it works out pretty slick, some of them are a little groggy still. I tell them a joke or two of the middle school kids while they wait for the transfer bus, I've gotten to know that a little bit. But I know that when I talk with the parents who've been in for events, they really appreciate having the transportation, and it's so much safer to not have those kids crossing the road that I can't imagine. I can't imagine it any other way because I didn't see it any other way. But it's working out great on our end, and the feedback I've gotten in form, I assume, it's really positive.
Does your parking lot seem manageable?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, as long as you pull forward. Just like any other parking lot, the pegs and other passengers tied, and we're all cool.
The big loop that they had.
And that helped tremendously. Um, at first, I know, um, there was some, like, hesitation about it, but once we gave the parents a bigger lead to go, but we added a bus over at K4 to pick up.
In the morning.
In the morning.
So it comes a little earlier, and normally go at night a little bit later, but like I said, I've gotten in, I'll get to know some of your middle school kids, and occasionally they help me out with some projects at the end of the day. I need some things moved. I ask them if they're available, if they're usually agreeable or can be.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we're at the audit report.
Okay, so the financial audit came in, um, late last week, um, that was by Gorans and Associates, this is the second year that they've done the audit for us. Um, you, you have, um, a bound copy at your, that's not the, um, AFR, it's just their, some of their findings, and you can kind of go through and see. Um, we scored a three point eight out of four again this year, that's what it's been a couple, for the last few years. Um, the only reason that we're down that point two is because of our outstanding debt, um, and that will just kind of carry with us through, but every, all the other factors there, um, we're still in good shape from the state. We did have one finding this year, um, we're down, the last couple of years, we've had two, so this year we only had one finding that was significant. We did not obtain debarment certification or check the SAM system for vendors over twenty-five. So, um, we already, there was no cost question in the business, this was just one of those procedures that got missed, um, that was a state, you know, grant requirement. Um, so their recommendations were to put procedures in place to ensure that all vendors, and so we were already doing that, so that was kind of an easy fix, it was just something that got overlooked. So that was the one big finding there.
And we've done it, none of our vendors have been disbarred?
Nope, none of them have been disbarred, we're all, we're in good shape, so that was just more of a warning, warning kind of a thing. Um, so the revenue expenditures in our big working, um, our education, O and M, transportation, and working cash, this is on page three of the AFR, and that was uploaded into this thing. Um, we took in about nineteen million, um, we spent about seventeen million, so we had about one point six, um, in excess, and so our fund balance, and those four, the, the four big ones, um, would, um, went up, so, um, we definitely did well there with our expenditures. Um, our long-term debt, this is also on page three of the AFR, um, is about thirteen million. Um, we have no short-term debt, which is good, that's something that we don't, we don't want to incur right now, so we have, um, our long-term debt there. Um, and then this is our fund balances, um, our starting fund balance, our excess or, um, deficit, and then our ending fund balance. You will notice O and M, um, we have a couple of funds that we spent more than we took in. O and M, there was just a lot of projects last year. Um, debt service, that's always, that one they don't really look at because of the abatements and stuff, that kind of is fluctuating. Um, transportation was the buses, um, and then capital projects, we had some bills that were, work that was done the previous year that came in last year, and so, um, I put some policies, or some procedures in place to make sure that I'm monitoring that, that was one of those things that, you know, first year kind of gotcha, so, um, watching that to make sure that we're, we're watching that. But otherwise, um, most of our, like, our education and some of our other ones definitely grew last year, so. Any questions on the audit, Eddie?
Can you go back on page Kelly? So Melissa, does the fund balance for the tort, they're at two hundred and five thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Did, did the facilities mean what we're talking, sixty-five thousand?
Tort is the, um, insurance, it's fire safety.
It's what?
Fire safety is what we're talking about.
Fire safety is the line out of here?
Yes.
But we have sixty-five.
That's what we, um, are budgeted to bring in. Um, the ending fund balance is kind of what we have in savings. So this year's budget, I think, is fifty-five, we're expected to spend about sixty-five, if we did everything, we are expected to spend sixty-five. And that a hundred and twenty-five thousand is just what we have in some share savings account in that, um, that account.
So if we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand in there, we spend fifty-five, how are we over?
Fifty, the fifty-five is the new revenue coming in this year, so that won't even touch the hundred and twenty-five thousand that's already in there. So if we were to spend sixty-five thousand, we would probably end up at a hundred and fifteen thousand at the end of next year because we spent ten thousand over what we took in. Does that answer your question?
Budgeted fifty-five more.
Yeah.
Expected to spend.
It looks like we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to spend in that budget.
To spend in that account. We do, we do. So that's, like, all of this, this is all of our money, those ending fund balances, that's all of the money that we have sitting in our bank accounts right now, between our investments and our bank accounts here that we could potentially spend. The budget that I, I rolled out, that's new revenue coming in this year that we have to spend. So, and then if we don't spend it all, our fund balances go up, but in the couple instances, if we spend more than what we brought in, then our fund balances go down, so that's kind of where we're at. So we do have cushions in all of our, and that's what brings our rating to three point eight is because we do have some of these cushions in our accounts.
So if we've only got eighty thousand dollars worth of life safety work to do, why wouldn't we do it all, spend the fund balance down and out, let you for that next year?
We, we absolutely could, um, we could do that. And anytime, if we have huge projects and we have fund balances, we, we could come to the board and ask to spend on some of those fund balances to do it.
Is that the reason that there's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar deficit in the capital projects, because they all come in in the year that they're, that they're
billed or budgeted for?
Yes, yes, that's some, we had a couple sneak in that were not budgeted, and then we had some projects that were already accounted for, and so sometimes you'll have that swing. But then fortunately, we have our fund balances that, um, that that cash flow is, is not a problem. Some districts don't have that luxury, and they're watching every check that comes in, making, do you know what I mean? But we do have that, that luxury there, so. Any other questions there? And if you read through the audit report and you have questions, you feel free to reach out, or, um, we can always talk to the auditors too.
Congratulations on a great audit.
Speaking of that, we have a motion to accept the audit.
Second.
We have a motion by Mulholland and a second by Maxi. Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Heverly?
Yes. Motion passes. Brings us to the resolution abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year twenty nineteen.
Our next two are, these are the yearly abatements that we do with our capital bill and money in our sales tax money, so.
Mary will be reading.
Mary will be reading, yeah.
Okay, we have a resolution abating the tax heretofore levied for the year twenty nineteen to pay debt service on general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series two thousand sixteen of community unit school district number two hundred, Boone and Winnebago counties, Illinois.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Rudy, any discussion? Roll call please, Kelly.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second resolution is resolution abating a portion of the tax heretofore levied for the year twenty nineteen to pay debt service on nine million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty cents capital appreciation school bond, series two thousand and three of community unit school district number two hundred, Boone and Winnebago counties, Illinois.
We have a motion by Maxi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rudy? Roll call. Oh, discussion. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to the food pantry.
Joe, I believe this one was yours. And Molly's got a little information. If you wanted to start with the premise that we're requiring.
Okay. Yeah, we had a letter home from Manchester saying that some grant had been lost from the Northern Illinois, uh, food pantry.
Food bank.
And, and asking us to, um, to help supplement that, to help alleviate that to parents. And I thought, you know, I don't know how much it is, but maybe the, the board could just cover that. Or, or maybe the school could find those funds and make sure that we have those snacks for kids that are maybe coming to school without breakfast. Is what I understand the, the need was.
Somewhat, yeah. So I have a little, just a little background. Um, so along with the backpack program, the Northern Illinois Food Bank provides snacks for, at Manchester was a snack cabinet for needy students. Um, and they didn't have the grant this past year. So our PTO president had overheard about this. And, um, heard we could use some snacks and offered to do a Thanksgiving snack drive. And I was like, okay, sure. And, um, so we weren't out of snacks, but we didn't have any more coming in. So I was like, yeah, good opportunity. Appreciate that. Um, we, with PTO's help, our schools now snack cabinet is, we're stocked for the year plus. Um, so historically, what we kind of found at Manchester, we, um, we're kind of one of the smaller schools using the, the snack stuff, um, is we were looking at about ten snacks a week. So about forty plus or minus snacks a month. So not a whole lot. Um, Capren, I understand, was kind of double what we were at Manchester. Papa Grove is looking at about, they do about ten snacks a day. So they're looking at about ten kids a day that need to come down, need snacks and things like that. Viewy Middle School, um, it was, I don't exactly have numbers on them, but kind of, um, theirs was kind of on a checkout basis from social work. And more of the kids would come down, like, or they'd mention, or teachers would come down and check out from the social worker that, like, they'd have kids mentioning that they didn't have breakfast at home or they were kind of hungry, things like, um, things like that. So, um, like I said, I mean, it's not a big, huge thing, but it was something, it was a big, you know, it's a help to some of our kids that don't have, um, come to school with snacks. And previous, um, part of the grant previously was that you did have to track how, how much you had. But I didn't have any of those former sheets to go back to. So I was reaching out to the one, to a couple of the social workers in the district that had experience with that. Even if it was really.
I really want to speak for the group, but I guess I'd be back in the mode, I really feel like that, that's something that we should be able to afford for our kids. That, and I saw, you know, some, so unfortunately, I follow all you guys' social media stuff, some, somebody looking for glue sticks. It's like, I just kind of feel like that we ought to be in a position where kids bring some supplies to school to start the year. We should be able to supply them with what they need to get through the rest of the year. That's my opinion, one of seven people here, but that's where I'm at. Like, you guys have plenty of other things to do with our running fundraisers to try and bring snacks into your school and find glue sticks and, you know, Kleenexes and stuff. I, that's where I'm at.
And Molly, that was my, uh, my sentiment also. Um, no, no condemnation for anybody how they handled it, PTO or anything like that. But I just thought, you know, rather than ask parents to do this, because who knows what they'll send in, maybe Molly.
They did really well.
Maybe Molly would be better, uh, at selecting what the snacks that are needed. And I don't know what that number would be, but maybe that's something we can work into a budget. And I feel, again, one of seven, that that's something we should be budgeting and not really sending out yet another request when it was to be sent in. Not that that was a bad idea. Again, I don't mean to slight the PTO for taking that measure. I love that they did. Just thought, well, we could save them the hassle and maybe this could be better organized. And it sounds like we do have some need for it. And speaking of data, I would imagine if they're not well-fed, that that probably impairs the ability to learn. So.
Oftentimes, um, staff just bring in food themselves, just because students have a good rapport with them or they have a very good relationship with the students. And students know what teachers or which counselor or social worker, I like to have snacks in my office. Because sometimes when a kid's having a bad day, it's just because they're hungry. And I, I appreciate hearing this from the board as well, um, because it's hard for a kid to ask for food. And we shouldn't have to ask our parents for, to provide food.
Is that something that needs to come back though? Or is that something you guys could just implement?
I just wrote down, I'll just talk to the principals about it at the admin meeting. We kind of talked about this at the board conference about, sometimes I think the perception gets out there that we're saying, no, we don't have money for this. And that's maybe not the case.
I guess for the group while you're out here, I mean, I guess that's not something that you and I talked about a little bit. It's getting our mindset out of this austerity mode that we're coming out of and saying that we need those basic things that we, we're responsible for that. I mean, ultimately, that's what the board is responsible for, is giving you guys this stuff. Please ask. You know, let's get out of being an austerity mode and move on, teach the kids.
And you and I have had more than one conversation where you see it on Facebook or I receive it in the mail and you say you didn't even know that it was an issue.
Sometimes I don't even know it's an issue. So it comes to me. Like, I know we got the backpacks, we got a backpack program, we got a bunch of these things and I, I don't know. Good deal.
I was just gonna say, you know, through our SEL committee as well, I know that the social workers were talking about the needs in terms of some of these things. So I know that more will probably come out through that process as well. So we'll definitely have.
And that needs to be shared with them. Feel free to request.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, everybody. Uh, that brings us to executive session. I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the appointment, yes, the appointment and employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body determined to validity. And replacement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students. So move. Having a motion by Maxi.
Second.
The second by Hazel Horse. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Motion passes. To leave executive session.
Still moved.
Second. Maxi and Hazel Horse, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have a motion and a second for, for adjournment.
A motion made adjourned.
Maxi?
Second.
Rudy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good night, everybody.
Happy holidays to you and your family.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.